Thanks for the warning.
It's always to you.
It always is, it always.
Really thing didn't really give me much info. Everybody ready? I call to order the town of Breckenridge work session July 12th, 2022. It is 3:00 PM. We begin with planning commission decisions. Anybody have anything they would like to discuss? We're going to talk about Soul Center at Alta Verde in a later update, so. You got it listed as your name. Okay, so nobody call ups nine. Right, we moved the legislative review. We start with the Summit Public Radio and TV easement dedication for first reading. And low.
Hello, Mayor and Council. We have a new proposal for an amendment to our existing agreement and First Amendment with Summit Public Radio and TV. Since the last amendment was signed in 2018, the first phase of their power line replacement project to the top of Baldi was completed on our jointly owned Loryum property. That power line was set in the road prism just shy of Iowa Mill. And since that time Summit Public Radio and TV has regrouped, hired SE Group, which is great. They have a lot of good support now in doing good studies and trying to plan a better route to their site up on the top of Baldi. They encountered some areas, and especially some of the old time landowners up there, know of some areas of deep bedrock that would be pretty prohibitive to installing an underground power line up there. And so they're working on a new overland route, which is very similar to what was done on Peak Six several years ago, using kind of this zipper approach of opening up the land, dropping the line in and closing it back up with fewer impacts to the land. And so what they are proposing is a new route on town and county lands. It's just a little bit of the Loryum property just near the Iowa Mill and then a little bit of our city claims, which are to the northeast of that, which you can see on the attached map. The Forest Service is pretty much ready to give their approval. They're waiting for the town and county to approve this. But we've been working really closely with the Forest Service, the county SE Group and Summit Public Radio and TV over the last many months and some biweekly meetings, just trying to get on the same page of what exactly would this entail? We're really concerned about restoration of Alpine habitat and restoration of the Loryum Road that was done in Phase One. Our partners at Summit County have decided to bring in a geotech for Phase One through the Loryum, just wanting to make sure that that restoration is done well. SE Group is also working with Peak Ecological to really come up with a great robust restoration plan for both that Phase One that was done on the Loryum property, but also this new phase that would be the 233 feet on the rest of the Loryum and the city claims. We don't really have a lot of teeth in our amendment that we, the current agreement that we have. It's a little bit vague on some of the restoration requirements and who's responsible for what. And there isn't a long-term monitoring plan in there. So what we're happy about with this new proposed amendment is the opportunity to fold all those restoration requirements into a plan with a long-term monitoring plan to ensure that that area does get restored. So that is what we are proposing today. We do have Neil Groundwater, who's in the audience, who's with Summit Public Radio and TV, and of course, one of our volunteers as well.
Questions? So the re-veg and will be going forward and back. In other words, so he'll go back to the Loryum and see that it.
And they've started some of that. They did some initial hydro seeding and Paul Geiger, who's one of the engineers at the county, has been working closely with SE Group and just wanting to make sure that it's a really solid plan and that we're really looking at bringing in a geotech person to make sure that it's done right. The county does have jurisdiction because that is a road through there. So they want to make sure that the specs of that are in alignment with all the county requirements. So that's taking a little bit longer than probably we would have been happy with initially, but we're hopeful that this will actually be done right and folded into that restoration and monitoring plan.
And how many, like the Loryum, the revegetation won't be too onerous as far as recreating here, but how many days will the, that area be closed because of the zipper procedure?
So that'll be done in one day for the entire, from basically Iowa Mill all the way up to their site on Baldi, goes primarily through National Forest. There's a little bit of private landowners involved in there and us. But one day, and it may take another day or two on either end, just to mobilize their equipment, which they're going to do through the Baldi Trailhead and come up that way in the road prism to, to get all that equipment in there. So they don't want to go over the Loryum where we're trying to restore.
What kind of equipment are they? How big a machine does it take?
It is, and I'm sure Neil could add in a lot of details. I feel like it's about a 12 to 14 feet width thing that is, it's three machines. I think it's a zipper that actually makes kind of a slice into the ground. It kind of folds back the ground. The next machine comes in to drop the fiber optic cable in place, and then the third one comes along and closes it back up. We've seen a lot of before and after pictures of what was done on Peak Six. Jay-Z, who you might remember, is actually on the county OSAC right now. So OSAC has also looked at this and is in support of it. And we really feel like they certainly had a lot of resources that were involved in that restoration, but very minimal impact to the ground overall, and we're hoping for the same, same thing here on Baldi.
Why aren't they going up the road?
It's really cost prohibitive. It's an order of magnitude of, oh gosh, I'm trying to remember if it's like $3 million versus $300,000 to go up the road prism. And it's further up the road prism when you get into National Forest and a little bit into some of those private claims that we're pretty certain there's bedrock, at least the studies that Summit Public Radio has done show bedrock. And it's difficult, can't just swing a little few feet left or right with that. And so that is why they started looking at these alternative routes. Certainly cost effective for them to go a shorter line distance. Also a shorter line distance if something happens along the way, they will have some little splicing cabinets, not on our property, but on National Forest, so that if something does happen to a line, they can get into one little section of it rather than trying to rip up and find where the issue is along the line.
Is there any opportunity here to add trails in this? Because I mean, the disturbance is pretty significant going up that side. Like, you know, do you run a hiking trail from say Iowa Mill up?
I think our thought is to try and keep this new route as it leaves the Loryum property and leaves the road prism as pristine as possible and really just want the Alpine tundra to recover rather than establish new trails up that particular side. The Loryum Trail will be kind of narrowed and made into a better trail surface, at least on our property.
Cool, thanks.
What's the hook to make sure that the Loryum, whatever we call the road, all the, back down to Loryum site, what's the hook to make sure that it's done correctly?
You know, honestly, I feel like this amendment is what gets us there because the, the current agreement that we have in place was not what Tim Berry drafted initially, and it got, in my opinion, watered down kind of by all the parties, and it became very less clear who's responsible when it has to be done. There's some good language in there, but we feel like this is our opportunity to actually make sure that it has teeth, that it is going to get done in a way that town and county are happy with. So I do believe this amendment will get us there.
Let me put it another way. Summit Public TV and radio don't have a ton of cash. This is not like dealing with Vale. What happens if they say, we're not going to be able to do that? I mean, I rode that alignment yesterday. It's pretty terrible. I mean, it wasn't a great ride before, but it was ridable, and now it's pretty chopped up, so.
Well, I think you'd have to decide, I mean, you could take action against them for breaching an agreement, you know? And that's, that's a decision we'd have to make at the time, so.
As I understand it.
If we have to go in and fix it ourselves and we look for compensation. You go after whatever cash they got, if that's what you decide you want to do. I mean, I think the fact that it's in writing and part of the agreement is, this puts us in a better position than we were in before.
Right, and I do think that five-year monitoring plan guarantees that success is as well, which we don't currently have in place. So they're responsible for continued monitoring and making sure that that restoration actually takes.
Could you bond for it and then have some cash set aside that they get refunded? If, and do we want to go that route?
I don't know what we bond for. It's not in the town limits.
We've, that has come up in the partnership discussions, and I'm not sure if that's something the Forest Service or the county will require, county jurisdiction on the roads, and then obviously a lot of the, the bulk of it's on National Forest, but that did, did come up.
And the, the forest thinks this will work, that disturbing that tundra will come back?
They, they do. I think they were carefully studying Peak Six as well and feel like that was a good result, so hoping for the same here.
Other questions? Everybody good with this at first reading? Yeah, all right. Thanks, Neil. Question of housing policies, also first reading.
Mayor, Council, so I will take a first stab at presenting this, and then I, if you have any questions, Corey and our experts are here to answer. But this isn't a change in policy. This is simply a codification of what's currently happening as far as your housing programs and policies and funding. After working closely with Lori and Corey over the past several months, we discussed that it would be important to start to lay out some of these policies legislatively in the municipal code and also begin to be strategic about what is adopted by council legislatively and what goes into rules and regulations, which are within the purview of the administration. So as far as the content, really, this is just laying forward. This is a division, and here's what they do. We also superseded some standalone ordinances that predated my time here and brought them into the municipal code, so they have an actual section. And then I guess if there's one policy change to note, it is the addition of another tool, so to speak, in compliance. So we've added administrative fines. And that way, if we're finding, you know, deed restrictions or covenants that are not being complied with, that we don't only have an option to go to court and a contract theory or municipal court as a criminal offense, but rather we can impose fines and try to use that as a stick to get into compliance, not, we've had a ton of problems there. But that, that's the first code provision. This is two separate bills with two separate votes tonight, but they are related. The second bill has to do with the Ethics Code. And I spent, even though this is short, I spent a lot of time looking into this one because I couldn't really figure out why it was written so broadly. I tried to figure out the history and did not, did not uncover anything there. So we just decided that we would make it more clear that housing contract programs and leases, they should be exempt from the requirements of no contract with the town under the Ethics Code. And we narrowed the language to speak in terms of what constitutes a conflict when it comes to financial gain, so that it didn't like capture such a wide net. And I think, well, the last thing I'll say is that we've been talking also about coming behind pretty quickly and drafting and putting in some place administrative rules and regulations. One of them will be on the agenda later tonight. I also noticed the discussion on land banks. So depending on the outcome of that, we may want to make some tweaks to the bill on first reading. So if you have any questions, that, probably Corey's better suited to answer them.
I don't know about that.
All right, questions?
Now, we handing out a clean copy tonight?
I have copies right here, but that was just the, oh, sorry, there was one tweak that we made to the intent, so I can pass that out.
We moved the sentence around on the first one to do with housing, and then do you make a couple other minor changes on the ethics?
On the Ethics Code, so I have hard copies. Nothing substantive, it was really just drafting and, and one comment.
But we'll ask you to approve the copy of the version that was handed out to you this evening when you do it.
Got that?
Yeah.
Anything else? Everybody good with this for first? All right, thank you, thank you. His report, Public Projects Update.
It's gone, so.
So.
You get a treat tonight?
Wow, it's nice.
I don't have anything to add, so I'm just here for any questions on the memo.
Learned a lot from Shannon. So. Questions?
A quick question on the Watson Roundabout. It states that the pavement will be temporary and removed later in the project. Is that, where does that pavement that we're just using for a month, where does that go? Does that go landfill or does that get recycled? Can you melt it back down? What happens to it?
So portions of it, basically all of it gets recycled. What's about to go down in a week will be permanent, but what's been put down kind of on the east side right now is the temporary pavement. And so they've been recycling some of it in place. When they mill it up, they mix it back in, forms the base course underneath the pavement. And then anything that doesn't get used generally gets taken to Peak down in Silverthorn, and then they'll reuse it in future pavements.
Thank you. Where's the wetland mitigation? Where are we putting?
Wetland mitigation, where were we putting?
So that's going out at the Muggins Gulch site on the Swan. So yeah, that's where the roughly point four acres.
Is it signed or anything or any sort of notation? So I can check it out. People ask me all the time where it was. I knew it was on. I knew it was on the Swan, but I didn't know where exactly.
Yeah, I don't think it's signed right now, but.
Right before Muggins Gulch?
So yeah, it's, I haven't been up there in a while. I'll have to take a look, but I can, I can include something in the memo.
There's a bunch of stuff going on before Muggins Gulch. I didn't know if that was the ideal of some sort of other mitigation there.
Yeah, I think it's just before Muggins Gulch is where it's at.
Questions?
I'd like to, I want to arrange once they get closer to getting ready to set that new bridge out on coin. I'd kind of like to arrange a site visit, go out there. I'll let you all know if you're interested to kind of see how it's progressing and we can kind of check out the river work so far that's happening to the area north of there, but I think it'd be interesting to get a little closer look at that Coin Valley project.
Bridges weight bearing when we drive electric buses.
Well, but yeah, we'll put your moped on.
Thank you. Yeah. Sign me up for that tour too. I'm mobility. Matt?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. I also learned a lot from Shannon. So all of your mobility updates are in your packet. I'd be happy to take any questions.
How's the dog thing doing?
Feedback has been pretty good in general. The ski resort is actually looking at finalizing or formalizing their policy. Apparently they didn't have one. They just allowed them. So we're working with them on creating a similar policy to ours, but our feedback has been great.
No issues, no?
We have more human issues than we have dog issues.
Dogs don't drink.
No surprise there.
Are you planning on updating the employee permit lot to say that fines would be a hundred dollars or will people just find that out when they get a ticket?
So we are waiting for the judge's signature tomorrow and then we'll start some public outreach in general. We will look at putting up some temporary signs that say that that fine is quite substantially increased. So we'll do something. It may also be a little bit of a hard learning for some folks.
Yeah.
But that'll begin on August 1st.
Surprise, surprise, surprise. Go ahead.
Are we going to get the trolley running this summer?
We had, yeah, we had it running over Fourth of July weekend. For the majority of every day, we had one small incident with it that took it off the street, but other than that, we, we have been struggling with staffing mainly with going out due to COVID or sickness in general. So we're kind of on that very fine line of being able to run it full time and not, I'd rather not. It, I would rather it not be unreliable and just not have it. So if we do get there, we have one gentleman started today with the license and, and if we get up to speed here pretty quick, we may be able to get it back online. So.
And so that's the first pull when we have staff issues.
Yes, yes.
I still think it's important for the south end businesses, but.
Anybody want to challenge Dick?
Nobody else agrees. So it's fine. I mean, we've never gotten a.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree that it's.
I just don't know. I mean, how are we going to get more staff?
From a brick. If you don't have staff, you don't have staff.
I got ambushed by Mountain Beverage upfront earlier about the delivery zone. Rick has a couple of cards. I don't know if you or Shannon want to follow up and talk to them. They would like to come talk to the council, but I would like you guys to talk to them first. So. And Main Street, you know, they, they sort of before they don't deliver here anymore, they told me. It's okay.
And outside of the and the people delivering, have we heard from businesses? Any feedback yet?
Well, actually a lot of the feedback from delivery drivers has been positive after they understood what was going on. We put out a little pamphlet that gave them exact information on where the park and I think that actually helped. And I think people have been more positively receptive to it than I had expected. In general, I think that we're, we are still seeing some scoffle out there with trucks just parking randomly anywhere they decide to. So we're working on it. We are citing vehicles a little bit more as we need to. So we're working through the process. I know a lot of these delivery vehicles don't even have delivery permits. So we're also working through that issue. So. I think the ones that are really complaining are the ones that actually aren't following our permit process.
So the signs in the ice house, one, you know, one of them is there's a post that's turned the wrong way. We got to get out there and says, and probably add a couple more. So.
Yeah, I noticed that recently too. We'll, we'll actually pull that one wooden post that faces the wrong direction.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Counsel. Great. Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Housing and childcare update. Back and Corey?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We did not have a childcare committee meeting in July, so there aren't any minutes for that. We'll pick back up in August. We did end the open enrollment cycle with 38 active applications. That's about eight less than where we were at this time last year. So much of that is attributed to the three year olds going to the pre K program. And we always get a handful throughout the year, but that's where we ended at open enrollment. There are minutes from our housing meeting that we had in June. We did not have a housing meeting today. It's moved to Thursday for this month. And I can answer any questions on the minutes from the meeting or childcare.
We had talked, I got this, this question. It's, but I didn't know how to answer it. We'd talked about moving forward with the timber line expansion or conversion of that room.
Yes. Great question.
Yeah. Where is that? And are we going to see the financials for that again?
Yes. We engaged with UA back. That's the company that did the capacity analysis. So they are coming back to us with a final proposal just to add to their current agreement. And we are meeting with them. Unfortunately, we have all this vacation going on with different people. So we are meeting with them the week of the 26th to kick that off with Leslie.
Great. I do feel like we have to continue to discuss with Leslie exactly. We know that this room can be converted to have children. We understand that, but how is it going to help the numbers so that we don't just keep expanding buildings and not impacting the number of kids we're serving?
Leslie will be integral in the whole entire process. We.
She gets it. I know she does, but we just have to make sure that, you know, it doesn't become not usable space.
On housing, there's so much great stuff in motion. Thanks for that. I'm curious with the Wedgwood Lodge. Did we come to?
We've been speaking, Lori has been speaking with her. We haven't finalized anything, but she does know that what we want to do. She's open to it. It's just kind of seeing where she is with everything. I don't know if Lori, I don't think Lori has spoken with her in the last week. So it's still, it's still ongoing and still in process. We've actually sent a lot of people her way saying that she has open places for people to live. But nothing finalized that I could report back on.
How many of the, the buy downs are under contract?
Three.
Three. Cool.
Three under contract, five are now we've removed the priority for those and any lottery requirements. So those are just on the MLS as normal deed restricted properties. We do have four more that we are prepared to put out there for another lottery within the next probably two to four weeks.
Are you opening up for master leases?
These are the ones for sale.
Oh, for sale. Okay.
Yeah.
Since us jump into those now. Okay.
Anyone can own them. Just the deed restriction remains, but they're open to any purchaser.
Thanks.
What is the status of the lease to locals program right now? And is there a timeline on for revising it or revisiting it?
A good question. Actually, BLCC met about it today and we were waiting to hear their perspective. It's, it's in a kind of a holding pattern because we don't have an option to put new leases in place because of when they would expire. And so the, the summer program basically is full per se. BLCC did agree to continue the program. We need to meet with landing locals to determine everything, but, and talk to the housing committee here. But they would like to extend it.
Is there things that we've learned from it that you would tweak?
Yeah.
Moving forward if it was to survive?
The number one on that is a rental cap. And we had talked about going to an employee. This, this program is used in other areas now and has become really popular. Now that Breckenridge and the county have done it. So Landing Locals has been traveling and talking to other areas in different parts of the country about the program. But in a lot of the areas, they do a per employee housed grant. And BLCC was not keen on that. They wanted to keep it on a per bedroom grant, but put caps on the amount that the person could charge, the landlord could charge for that unit. The numbers I saw today or heard today were 12 or $1,300 per bedroom. We're a little bit worried about overcrowding if we did a per person grant. So makes sense.
Jay, we've talked in housing about this is kind of season by season, year by year. We're not getting in anything long-term yet.
12 or 13, is that reasonable?
Depends on who you ask, but it is what we're seeing in the market as a pretty average. We did get, you know, there are some up there in the 2,000 range per bedroom, which, you know, it doesn't get into any kind of an affordable range for our workforce.
Yeah.
So.
It's more reasonable than what some of the ones we've been paying that are
Yeah.
getting over 3,000 plus our money. That's ridiculous.
Yeah. Of the year.
Average over the winter for Breckenridge alone was just over 1,200 per bedroom. So we weren't far from that. We just had a couple of outliers that sort of were picked up by a lot of people and some of them never even came through. You know, they weren't even part of the program, but I think it was 1,261, if I remember was the average per bedroom. So a little bit closer to 1,300.
Eligibility of a landlord for that.
So that will have to be updated as well. So the, the original eligibility was they had to have a short term license before the beginning of the program, which was October 15th of 2021. They had to be actively using that license as well. And so it was really that true short term to long term conversion. And then, you know, there were other requirements as far as the lease amount that, that equated to the grant amount, things like that. But that was the basis of the program.
Thank you. Other questions?
Rick, just so you know, on housing, we are under contract for the lodge. We said in, so we went under contract last week, 50 50 with the county.
How many units is that?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Eight.
Good, good.
I can't remember. Do we have to figure out a kitchen situation or?
I mean, well, I want to see how it's been working with the county and Frisco, but they have a common kitchen and we have the ability to do some of that. And you know, each room has a little refrigeration place. And so I think we, you know, you know, my recommendation is we get in there, we get leased up. I mean, let's get people in at this winter and then we can continue to, to see how we want to make improvements over the course of having it for a while. So. We should take possession in about 45, 50 days, less than two months. I think we're, it's, we got a quick closing on it.
September 28th, maybe is the closing? Or is it the 14th?
It was like 60 days out. So.
It's September.
How quickly can we get sewer to it?
I mean, I, I don't know that answer.
The matter?
I don't think it matters now. It matters when we want to start adding or making improvements. It's add, but we could run it a year or two or three if we need to. It's being serviced and maintained.
That per unit price is fantastic. That's great news. Nice word.
I think we did good on it. So.
Questions? Corey, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Committee reports. We had social equity. Any questions? And events committee update.
So other than the memo in the packet, two things I'll mention, one is that Rick did approve the waiver for the Breck epic. And then the other piece is for the BIFA installation locations, they're running through, they ran through the SEPA group. We've sent them out or Sarah sent them out to the events committee group with a request for response. If they have an issue or a concern that they get back to her by tomorrow. And then once we have that, I will send them out to you as well, so that you have an opportunity to put eyes on the actual installations and where they're proposing that they're going to be located. So that you can give me some feedback if you have issues with any of those. And other than that, I don't have anything else. Kelly, I don't know if you.
The only thing I wanted to make sure that everyone saw is, was one of the discussion items, which was a new town event for 2023. And I just think it's worth making sure that everyone's aware that that discussion is going on.
Is that being driven by the BTO?
I think it's a sort of a combined conversation that's happening with the BCA and the BTO. And it may, I think they already, the BCA was already thinking about DEI and how they might have a an event that supports everyone in the community and considers the culture of the people in the community and celebrates that. It, that may have come also sort of clicked on with some of the conversation from the social equity commission. But that's sort of how it all got rolling and Lucy's kind of concept is to pull together an organizing group of local people to work on it. So it would be sort of grown, you know, grassroots, but it is, you know, to Kelly's point, it is another event, which I think Lucy hopes would be something that would become iconic in our community.
Do we know what it is?
No, I mean, just like Shannon was, we don't know it all. I'll just say that it's like, it's very, very, yeah. You know, this was an idea that people were interested in making sure that the community had a very, you know, inclusive event. And that's as much description as we really got. I just think it's really important. Well, I, I guess that we'll go on to say one other thing is that I think that maybe BCA and Lucy thought that it could be a transition from when we used to have wave, which we haven't had in several years now. And so there is a bit of that June open, you know, time. That's probably the most likely fit for that time. But I just think because we've had so many discussions about, you know, making sure that we have a balance and a harmony for the people working and living in this community. I think it's definitely something that we want to continue to stay aware of. And I mean, in, in my mind, I, my first thought when Lucy brought this up, I thought I'd really like to see our existing events be inclusive, like, you know, let's just make sure all of our events are very inclusive. But then the more I thought about it, the more I thought like this is definitely something that we could consider as a town and it would be an appropriate use of energy to look into and see if it's something that we can do and that we can work with the Equity Commission to, you know, maybe it can be something that they can be really proud of and excited about. And if it can continue down that path, I think it's very worth the time and energy. I don't think that we just need another event, but everybody, BTO, every, everyone's aware. We don't just need another event. So.
Sounds interesting and vague.
Yes, very vague.
I think for it to be authentic, it's going to have to be grassroots driven.
Yeah.
So I. I love the approach. I think it's great.
And thanks for expanding on that. I feel like it came out of a, the Equity Commission, the Events Commission, just feedback we got from the community, how successful town party was, town cleanup, if there was a possibility to create another one of those hyper local community building focused event. So thanks for clarifying that. I didn't realize if those along the same ideas, but it sounds like it's something somewhat different.
We could couple it with duty free brick.
Your favorite.
We can couple everything with duty free brick.
And I think the June also that pride is in June. So there's some kind of connection to.
Cool.
I was just going to say, there is also and has been conversation around events that are already occurring and making sure that they're also celebrating our culture and community and people are involved in the people of that culture. And people are involved in the people of that culture are involved in planning for events that celebrate their culture.
I was just curious, uh, we could move on to a different topic within events?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Uh, I saw it mentioned the snow sculptures and just curious if there was any thoughts of like, if manipulating that event at all, uh, out of core town? Or if I still take it Saturday? Or if there's any more talk about moving awards from Saturday to midweek or anything like that?
I don't think we've talked about that anymore. And I don't know if Kelly. Conversation around that or not. I don't think, like, we've, Lucy has talked about some of those things, like moving the awards day and that kind of thing. But I haven't heard any more on that. They, there was a group that did an extensive look at the location and could not find a better location for it, so.
Yeah, we didn't have a discussion about, you know, managing the days or the people. But, I mean, that's definitely gonna be part of the discussion coming.
This is awards on the twenty-seventh, which is a Friday?
It's usually.
Saturday, right?
Saturday.
It's progress.
It is progress. We'll see if it changes.
One day at a time.
Anything else on events? Yep. All right, we go to, uh, open space master plan update.
Hello again. Bosac had a special meeting last night to talk specifically about the master plan. Really focused on content. One of our own, Chris Tenel on Bosac was the facilitator of that. So he was terrific in really trying to bring out, um, the top priorities, top concerns from each Bosac member and trying to find areas of commonality in agreement. So we have compiled a lot of great information. We're in the process right now, staff of trying to type that up, organize it, um, to be able to get to DTJ, our consultants. And what we're hoping, um, there were some structural changes that Bosac recommended. It's probably gonna take our consultants a couple of weeks to work in all of those edits from kind of content and grammar, um, to a little bit of design work in there. And we're hopeful, um, one of the next steps we hope would be a joint meeting with Bosac and council, uh, with enough advance, uh, to review the next draft of the, um, master plan. I think the very earliest that would be able to happen would be the council meeting on Tuesday, August ninth. Um, but obviously we can push things back if the draft is not ready or if folks have comments, um, prior to that meeting that we're not ready for that. But that is kind of the next step. It was a great meeting last night with a lot of good input from our Bosac members.
Do you know how long, if we were gonna have that, um, joint meeting on August ninth? We, I'm assuming we wouldn't get it as part of the packet. We would get it like at least a week ahead of it.
Before that, yeah. I mean, we can certainly include it in the packet for the general public, but we would get it to you all in advance of that.
Okay, that's my only concern.
Jeffrey, how'd it, how'd it go?
You, you know, like, like Anne said, there was a lot of, a lot of good ideas, a, a lot of ideas in general. You know, uh, I wonder how we're going to codify them all, get them all into the master plan. Because, you know, some of, you know, some of the ideas were, you know, kind of thrown out there and without necessarily establishing a consensus. So, um, you know, there's just, it was no time, there's no time to go through every particular concern and say, well, how do you guys all feel about that? So, um, I'm a little bit less, uh, optimistic, uh, as far as, uh, August ninth, date as far as a, a, a group, uh, joint meeting with it, with Bosac and council. Um, one of the things they talked about is, uh, having council put together individual trails plan, like doing our, our own trails plan, uh, that, because the trails plan is included in that. And, and, you know, so the, some of us thought we, maybe we should do that a little bit, just without DTJ, just with the, the experience and the brains in the room with, uh, the, uh, Bosac commissioners and staff to kind of say where we are and where would we like to go? And what are the possibilities of, uh, future areas and the reality of, of, uh, accommodating all user groups? So that was, you know, I mean, that, that's something that they could, Bosac could do on its own. And, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll see what happens. We'll see how DTJ, uh, come, you know, responds. Personally, I don't want to spend any more money on this thing. You know, I, I think that, uh, I think what we gave them last night should be part and parcel of what we've already paid them for, so. Um, and, and yeah, there was some, there was some, uh, issues that some of us are, you know, that, yeah, there was some issues that we weren't all in line on, you know? So, um, and we'll see what, how it shakes out, how, how what we did last night is disseminated into the master plan. And if, uh, you know, if, if we all kind of got, um, most hot bot button topics answered. I mean, there's some, there's a couple of things I'm gonna fall on my sword for if, if it's not included in the plans, so.
Is the next step within scope still?
What do you mean within scope?
Like, we're not, it's still part of their scope of work. It's not, yes.
Yeah, better be. Uh, yeah, so, is that, but, you know, like you say, like Anne said, Tenell did a wonderful job. Duke was, uh, was out, uh, he's not feeling well. But, um, yeah, I, I, I think, I honestly think it's gonna take a little bit more time for everyone is, is satisfied. That's my gut feeling, you know, but I'm, I'm a pessimist.
Is it still huge, going to be huge?
So, right now it exists as an executive summary, which is shorter. And, um, Bosac's concerns were to make it even shorter yet. From a staff perspective, we're still hoping to have the full plan that we can use internally with our staff and include all the appendices that most people aren't gonna want to read through, um, or get into that level of detail. Uh, but the real focus, I think, for the general public and most people's consumption of the plan is gonna be that executive summary.
Which is around sixty pages, right?
Right now.
Lot of pictures.
Lot of pictures. Yeah, and, um, I, I said, you know, there again, it's one of the things that I, that we didn't agree on. I said, let's get rid of the pictures. And, uh, I get kicked out of the crib on that one. People, uh, they like, like pictures. So, you know, there's, there's a few things like that, that, that people just, uh, you know, had, had, had just varying opinions on.
Do you think we're at a spot with the content where we're like, close enough to be able to, like, put a bow on this and get some closure and kind of get it, you know, maybe not perfect, but like, good enough to be able to, to act?
You know, um, perhaps, I mean, if, if, if you, uh, I mean, the, the comments, the various seven people commented. And I, and I bet there was, um, hundred comments and corrections.
Wow.
At least. And some of them, some of them are grammar.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Some spelling and stuff like that. And, uh, you know, the, on the, on the council, on the commission, you know, we got, you know, we got Rossi that does it for a living, that does stuff like this for a living. Bobby, you know, you, you know, you know what she does? She's by diesel for battleships in her past life. So the, some, some of these people really have a good sense of what a master plan should be and have precise observations about how to make it, uh, better and make it a plan that we can live with for, um, for a long time. But, uh, yeah, I, you know, my, I personally would like to see a, a, a little bit more. Um, you know, part of the reason we did this is because, you know, early on, as we felt that the, 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 the open space was getting a little bit too, one user group centric. And we, you know, wanted to try to, try to include more, uh, more users, more diversity into it and make sure that everyone, uh, has a place at the table and feels it being listened to. And, uh, in, in going forward, they feel vested in our open space. So, yeah, I, I think it's, uh, you know, I'll send you the, um, I'll send you the comments, but they're, you know, and mine were the shortest, if you can believe that, yeah, so.
I'm surprised there was grammar and spelling errors that you guys are fixing.
I didn't, I didn't notice anything. Saying user group, yeah, yeah, there was, there was a, a, a fair amount. I, I learned something about an Oxford comma, which I had no idea what the hell that was. But, yeah, there was a, and, and also, I, I think, you know, like Bobby made a point. She said, they, it seems like they were saying the same thing different ways. Like, in other words, rather, and, and it made it sound like maybe, maybe more than one person was, was writing the thing or, uh, uh, contributing. But, um, I, I didn't really mess with the grammar and, uh, you know, one, one thing, yeah, I didn't mess with, I don't know any more grammar or punctuation or spelling.
No, we've noticed.
No, no.
So, I feel like what would be, one of the other reasons we did this is to sort of identify and help us manage areas that were maybe being overloved or really overutilized. Is that something that's gonna be dealt with in this plan? Or is that not, did that not make?
We talked a little bit about conservation, um, it's, it's in, it's in there. But I didn't see that as much. They divided, they divided the, uh, you know, open space inventory into three zones, front country, mid-country, back country. And it seems that, um, they've kind of relegated the front country to a larger, a larger population, more, you know, more people. And, and just kind of say, oh, we're gonna have to live with this, opposed to dispersing it. They talked about, you know, having, having one-way trails and things like that in the, in the front country and, and downhill only trails and, and loops. So they, they're talking a little bit about, about congestion and how to deal with it. But there again, that's a moving target. There's different opinions of how to deal with congestion. Like, like personally, I, it drives me crazy when I hear people referring to our trails as mountain bike trails. They're, they're, everybody trails, you know what I mean? And, and so I, I think especially in the front country, I think we could do more work on making it easier for some people, you know, from Iowa, whatever, to come up and, and access our front country, uh, in a, in a, in a manner that they feel comfortable and relaxed doing. So, um, and, you know, and, and there's some of that in, some of that where there's a fair amount of trail design, what we talked about. And, and, uh, yeah, so. More than you needed to know.
Well, I just thought it's, so it's more, it's, but it, I mean, I remember when I read a very, very early draft, it was pretty much, it was very focused on how to analyze new trails.
Yeah.
And I guess I'm also curious, did they incorporate anything in about how to manage our existing trail system?
There was some of that, you know, Rossi came up with a good point, you know, in, in, just to, to, to codify that exactly, saying, okay, and there again, I'm totally paraphrasing, but, you know, we have X amount of man hours and, and we'll divide those man hours into maintaining and creating. And, and so there's gonna be a balance, but, you know, you know, because obviously, if you spend a lot of time building new trails, you're gonna have less time and manpower to clean up the trails we have and maintain the ones we have. You know, so I, I, I think that's something that should be in there. And, um, to, to a certain degree it is, but not as much as, as I'd like, you know? Did I miss anything?
I think you've covered it all. Uh, I mean, I think one, one of the observations I had last night, as much like Jeffrey's saying, is that there are, some things are at odds, some people's opinions are at odds on some of these issues, right? Some people would like more wayfinding, some people would like to have more wayfinding signage, other people would like to have more wayfinding, being reliant on the person who's, who's on their bike or running or whatever. So, want to keep more rustic and rural. And so I think last night was really helpful in that we finally got to some of those tension points. I think we got some broad themes that I think will give us certainly moves forward. I felt like it was a positive meeting. I think it was content focused. But I think there are, as Jeffrey points out, multiple kind of sub-issues, um, that need to kind of tease out and get to some level of consensus. And we, and the constant battle, one of those is trying not to be too explicit or prescriptive, right? The idea was to provide a toolkit and a way to make decisions moving forward. And so rather than saying, here's what we think it should be happened, you know, should occur for, let's say, e-bikes as a convenient example. Here's what we think next five years for, should be e-bikes. Rather, the goal of the plan initially and has been all along is to try to keep at a level where we have a decision-making framework and a process by which we can make those determinations as we proceed in the future. And we've got different Bosac members and different staff members and everyone else. And we kind of move in a way that is logical and, and answers those questions in real time versus trying to prescribe what we think it should look like. So that's one of the challenges we've had, um, all along. And I, I think Kelly said it in a, in a, sorry, Chris said it in a really good way early on, is that I think we've, we collectively are trying to give the DTJ the best information we can to give them the tools to make that, to make, to make those changes. And we'll, we'll move it forward as, you know, as you said, August ninth is the earliest you would meet on it. You know, from a contract standpoint, they're agreeing to come back. But if we need to hammer out more, more meetings on this and get it to a place where you and Bosac can sit down and have a fruitful discussion about what are the finer points are, what? I mean, I don't know it's gonna appease every person in every room and everyone, everyone's different vision of what exactly this plan would be. Because I think, I don't think that's possible, frankly. But I think we can get really, really close to where we can all agree that it gives us the framework going forward. Once again, the challenge is, do we, how far? I mean, it's, it's tempting to say, this is what I think we should do on this particular issue, right? Versus saying, here's how we decide this particular issue in the future. Here's, here's the process.
That was a big thing last night is prescriptive or visionary. And, and some, some folks wanted a little bit more prescriptive. And, uh, and it's got, uh, elucidated that, uh, yeah, so visionary is helpful as well. But, uh, yeah, so it's, it's, there, there was, you, you know, that was we banning about that all night long, so.
When will we get our first look at it?
I mean, after last night's feedback.
Yeah.
We need to get that information processed on our end, get it to DJ, DTJ and give them a chance to.
Yeah, I don't want to know. I want to know, when, when are we getting the next, you know, rough cut because?
I'm hopeful around the first of August, but if it's massive design shifts, that, it's the does, design piece that takes them a little bit longer. But I'm hoping a few weeks' time is all they need. They, they think that sounds reasonable right now, but not having seen all the comments yet.
I want to make sure that we have enough time as council to read it, that we don't get it on a, you know, Friday for a Tuesday meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't see this happening in the first meeting in August, because there's other things we have to talk to you about for that meeting. So it's probably. Also, so hopefully we can get it to you with a good two weeks.
Okay. I just want to make sure we have enough time, yeah. Other questions? Lot of pictures, like you said. All right, thank you. A quarterly staffing report. Dana.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. Good afternoon. For the first time, I've included some information, um, in your packet regarding our own workforce here at the town of Breckenridge.
Dana.
Mike.
Pull the mic to you.
Is that better? So I've included some information for the first time on our own workforce, some turnovers and vacancy rates. Um, and I am here to answer any questions that you may have about the information.
How bad is it?
It's getting better. It's, yeah, it's getting better.
Ellen says that about my dancing, but how bad is it?
How bad is it? Um, I think, I do think it is getting better. We're sitting, we're starting to see more applications. We're starting to, the first Q one and Q two, we did have a number of turnover, which is pretty common. I've been, I've been in the community long enough to know that Q one and Q two turnover, are usually more than latter part of the year. So people finish out one more season, one more, whatever. They get through the winter and then they find, then they move to other employment or other locations.
I mean, I went to the post office, the grocery store, the pharmacy, UPS store yesterday. And any short staffing that we have pills in comparison to what's going on across our community. I mean, it is just, it is dire, you know? So hopefully, you know, I hopefully Breckenridge will be known town of as a cool place to work and we can retain our staff because other places are not able to.
Some professions will continue to be a challenge. I mean, we see policing being challenging across the country right now. And, you know, the chief went to a training down in Aurora a couple of weeks ago and everybody on the front range is dealing with, you know, proportionally very similar, you know, uh, numbers that they have there. And so, you know, we have to, we have to continue to be competitive because people that, number one, there's less people wanting to enter that profession, right? So that's, that's a challenge. And so the people that do want to enter it, we have to be competitive for those. So we have to continue to look at our salaries for those key positions. And we have to, uh, and housing is probably one of the biggest things that we have that others don't. Now, that's not as big an issue, right, in the front range? Now, that's not as big an issue, right, in the front range.
Right.
And so I think, and you know, we're gonna continue uh we, on those areas to be creative and talk about what does that look like? And there may be things that we would prefer we don't do because we would rather have those people be part of our community, but the time may come more like the fire department where somebody's up here for three, three days a week and renting one of these rooms that we just acquired, right? Because that's all they need and then they're back down somewhere else and uh, but we don't know that. And I think we'll keep plugging away. Uh we're reacting on those things like we need to, especially those critical positions. Because the police department was, I think, is this one of the scariest number in there. When you look at eight positions in the first six months of this year, I mean, that's half of your, fifty percent of your patrol staff. Uh more than fifty percent of your patrol staff right there. So you know, you're running everybody on twelve-hour shifts and that, that can really drain you quick, people that are there. So but we are uh making strides and trying to do some things. You know, this, I like having this baseline and this is something we want to bring to you on a quarterly basis. We'll bring a report and look at it. We're gonna tweak how we're capturing, you know, we uh do an exit interview on all voluntary resignations. And so we uh capture how they leave and you know, there's usually somebody, most of the time people leave for other jobs, right? Unless they retire. Sometimes they relocate when they take another job and sometimes they leave for another job in Summit County. That distinction is important.
Yeah.
Yes.
Tells a little bit of a story more. So we want to break, we're gonna break that out a little more to see. It's, you know, because we know that there were people that left for other employment, but they also left Summit County at the same time. And it doesn't, it shows up more just left for other employment. So we talked about tweaking that a little bit.
Capture that a little differently. So sometimes it's hard to tell if people are leaving, leaving their job for another position in Denver or are they leaving the area and they got a job in the Denver area? So um we're gonna try and capture that as accurately as we can. We'd have a new HRIS system, which will help us with that. So Q1 data, we weren't able to capture it because we were on the old system. Q2, we have a new HRIS that actually captures that for us. So.
Do you think it'd be beneficial to capture if people are staying in the community but working remotely? Would that also help tell a story for?
We could certainly capture, we could certainly capture that.
We, we know anecdotally, we know we've had people leave because they were able to, to take a job that allowed them to work remotely. And so they could basically stay at home and work. I mean, we know there's a few of those.
I would say there are a few of those.
Uh thirteen point three percent vacancy rate, is that around thirty people ballpark?
Um.
It's a hundred and ninety full-time, so it's not that many.
You can see, I have it broken out by department, so um and it's twenty-six total.
Cool. Yeah, thanks. And this is great. So thank you guys for putting this together. I think it's, you know, I think everybody up here wants to make sure you're getting the resources you need. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
And thank you. I mean, you've, you've reacted quickly. I think we positioned ourselves to still remain competitive and we're not done, right? We know that there's things uh we're looking at that'll be coming in the next few months as we prepare for the 2023 budget and we uh get our compensation study wrapped up. Uh we know there's other changes that will need to occur, so. We're close, we're close.
Thank you.
Thanks Dana. All right, uh anybody need a quick break?
Yeah.
I'm gonna take a quick five.
Hey, what's up, buddy? She did a little pre-.
Not yours. Yours is like the double-edged. See, everything went public.
Yeah, I heard some, somebody said.
Oh, obviously he did. I totally missed.
No, no, Peter Joyce.
Yeah, I'm assuming he will be here.
No.
He's in town.
He wasn't down.
He's in town last night.
All right, we're gonna reconvene and go to the Family Intercultural Resource Center Town Project. Chris?
Good evening, guys. Um yeah, we have the, the Soul Center Town Project tonight. Um I'll be happy to take any questions. Um we had a complete staff report and summary in the packet, but happy to answer any questions or get any additional materials if you have additional questions ahead of the hearing tonight.
All right, questions, everyone?
Layout's a little different from where, when we last saw it. Um and I understand that's better for loading area, everything as it's laid out. Are we pretty confident that, that P is the only access to Alta Verde two and there won't be hold-up, hold-ups or issues there?
Yeah, I don't think it'll be like related to uh, you know, truck traffic. Our understanding, it'll probably be one to two large trucks a week. You know, beyond just the um clients coming to the center. And I think there'll be for some pickup and drop-off of clients, they may utilize that truck access as well. Um just so if people don't have to come in or if they're taking donations, um just to kind of separate it.
Great, thank you.
Do you have any say on when the, uh when the trucks come, the, the, the big trucks, can we uh?
I don't think they do, Jeffrey.
No.
We talked to him about that and it's, it's kind of uh, you know, when, when they get that type of stuff. But I don't think you can say, has to be, I don't know if they can have it, you know, before nine AM type thing before, you know?
Okay. Jay?
I just wanted to touch on the entry towers really quick and, you know, just from recent experience and presence in this particular application to a certain extent uh being used as a precedent. Do you see that as being controversial moving forward or being used as uh precedent for where there might be scope creep of what can be over ten feet or less than ten feet taller than the recommended height?
Yeah, I think in the code it does, it gives the allowance for both the planning commission and the town council. So it's really at the, I think, the council's discretion where to apply. I mean, most recently, we did give that a similar exemption for the gondola terminal in the master plan for BGB. Where we, we found that there was no density or mass and it was, you know, the height was kind of, I guess, incidental to the building. You know, we discussed that with um, it's okay to go in a little bit more detail since it's a town project at this time. We, we did discuss it with the applicants and you just noted, because they were really uh good about maintaining the twenty-six feet for the bulk of the building um while still having higher ceilings for the market and high enough ceilings for their office space. But really, it was the designers, both Suzanne and Andy felt fairly strongly that this looks better with having the roof broken up by having the two-foot kind of extensions on the towers. There's nothing really like functional that they're getting additional space. There's no additional density or mass. And they made that case at the work session to the planning commission and, and the planning commission thought that was reasonable and could be accommodated under the building height definition within um development code.
Got you. I just know it's, sometimes it's easier when, you know, Suzanne's dedicating her time pro bono for a town project to be a little bit more liberal with the, with the code where that has uh come and bitten us before. So I just wanted to get some clarification.
Yeah, it, it's interesting because it's been a while since I think we've given that type of exemption. But you know, now, really in the last eight months, it's been twice that's been asked. And that's sometimes how, you know, things happen. Once people are aware that there is an exemption or someone else has it, then there's the new idea of how the.
So it's this one and the gondola or the two that you're referring to?
The two, yeah, those are the, the two within the last, the last year where we have allowed the um not to be counted as height under the building height definition. It does allow um, says like towers, spires or features that have no density or mass. Um but it's, it's, it's not an absolute or not, not a guaranteed, it's up to the discretion of the planning commission and the town council.
Because I, I share Jay's concerns about the precedent of it.
Um Chris, I, I feel like this was discussed in depth at the meeting, but I would just like a little more explanation as to why they, what drove the access road with the two curb cuts and the additional pavement? It just seems like so much more, it's like more development than was necessary and I don't really understand how we got there.
Yeah, I mean, from a, from a design standpoint, I think uh the planning department had a similar concern um initially. And then we had several meetings with the applicants, with engineering, ultimately a, a final meeting where we had engineering streets. Um I believe Rick and Shannon were also in the meeting, but really trying to balance design. You know, the uh having efficient circulation and not have like, you know, a moat of pavement around the building.
Right.
And then we, when we looked at the alternatives of just being able to fit a full-size um, you know, tractor trailer in there. You know, we explored some other things where we really came further into the P and looped around to the north side of the building so we could preserve, you know, this, the building frontage on the road, but that would bring, you know, the truck further in towards Alta Verde. The way some of the roads were designed, it made a couple additional more difficult turns for a large vehicle and still would have to have another curb cut that, the exit out. And it's somewhat a function of the site being bordered by, you know, three different streets. And you know, I think the, the first configuration we looked at had kind of a similar pull-through, but it had some additional paving to back into the building, which was to take out some of the screening and just look, uh make it look much more back a house than it does currently. And so this was, I think, the, the compromise to have, you know, larger truck traffic circulation, not enter in the, near the residential area and stay out on I think at the time it's called McCain Road, I forget what it's called uh currently. And it, it was kind of a compromise. And then what the designers did, what Susan and Andy proposed was kind of enlarging the windows on the bottom floor, creating um kind of an entrance feature over the loading dock to mimic more of a front door to give it um just a nicer street appearance. And that, that was kind of the, I think, the compromise for everyone, because I think when they started, you know, working with engineering and showing the action, actual turning radiuses of the, the truck. You know, some of the things that we thought might be possible really weren't, just weren't possible. And honestly, in terms of impacting the neighborhood, were probably more impactful. So that's kind of how we, that's how we got to.
We were worried about the potential daycare that's coming in too and where that would drive traffic to. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's yet another thing, uh thing to be concerned. If we had, you know, eliminated the curb cuts, brought them in through the P, entered the end and gone around the building, you know, as the site becomes more built out with a potential childcare or other social services, then you have trucks kind of going through the middle of the site. So um you know, that, that was probably the, through the process, the, the item that required the most, you know, time to really like study in that. And um you know, I think we would all concede it's not exactly perfect from probably an aesthetics or um circulation. It, it seems to be the best solution for a building. It has to have that function on that, that site.
Okay.
You comfortable with the loading zone there right next to the building and kind of the, you know, obviously there's a lot of asphalt there, but just initially it doesn't look like there's just looks a little tight and, and not super functional from getting food into the, the pantry and, and, and actually the drop-off as well for the thrift. You comfortable with the loading zone there right next to the building and kind of the, you know, obviously there's a lot of asphalt there, but just initially it doesn't look like there's, just looks a little tight and, and not super functional from getting food into the, the pantry and, and, and actually the drop off as well for the thrift and treasure just looks, it just looks tight with recycling in there.
Yeah, and I think that was, you know, ideally they probably would have liked a loading dock. And, you know, this, the directly unload, but I think part of the compromise was the, since there wasn't a huge volume of trucks, like, you know, city market or something where you're getting constant hourly deliveries. They felt they could live with loading via Dolly.
And so why, why, I don't understand why we wouldn't accommodate that, a loading dock.
Well, I think when they are proposing the, the previous site plans, it was throwing off some other things with the building and, um, just the amount of paving and where the truck would be relative to the road. And then pushing the building even further into the site. Just in terms of, I think.
The original, when we saw that original plan where they had kind of coming up and then they were going to back along the side member.
Yeah.
Had a loading dock, they had, that had not been engineered and that those turning, and they said though, they, they probably never would have met those turning radiuses that they needed for a semi on there. I met with them on Friday and they did not seem concerned at all about the loading dock part of this thing, but.
The thing I don't understand, it seems like, it's almost like we're building this in the middle of the city.
Yeah.
With all the restrictions, there's nothing out there. It's a bunch of rocks. I don't understand why we can't bend whatever we need to bend to make this thing work the best way it can. Why, why does it have to be fronted anyway that it's fronted? Why does it, you know, I mean, does that, I, or am I going crazy?
I'm with you. I'm with you on that.
This seems like we are trying to push this thing into a location with roads that don't exist. And I'm not.
They couldn't have a loading dock on that east side?
No, I mean, I think part of it is that, you know, there are certain of their building. I think they wanted the, the floor layouts, the way that they are designed. And, you know, because I think initially we said like, well, is there a different way you can configure the building or break it up? And they seemed, um, I'm not sure if anyone is here representing the FERC, but just in terms of the layout for the food pantry and the offices. And they, they seemed pretty firm that they wanted that layout of the building. So when they started looking at that being the layout and kind of the, the footprint, then some of the other elements external to the building were, to Rick's point, were not really possible. And that's how we got the redesign with the loading without the loading bay.
I still don't understand. I mean, there are a ton of roads out here that don't exist. We seem to be forcing some stuff. Because of some roads that don't exist. And that, I guess, Chris, is what I don't totally understand. I mean, this should be a pretty easy building just to drop in. There's no real front door. There's no, I mean, any, this thing can be configured in, in any position geometrically. There's road B and road C. And then I don't know what the, this other, this other road becomes. But there, there's just seems to be a lot of verbiage that this is difficult. We're making some stuff happen because of things that are going to exist, but don't currently. And I want to make sure we're not forcing things that we don't need to, where they can't get exactly what they want. I mean, first of all, we're giving them land. I want to make sure that this is exactly what the community is going to need. I don't want to at some point say, oh, wish we would have had a loading dock, but we didn't because whatever reason. So I'm a little, I guess I'm a little confused about, about the plan and some of the comments.
I think from, from our review standpoint, we were reacting to a building that was presented to us. And then, you know, based on, based on comments and also with engineering's input, I think to Rick's point that how it was drawn initially, the trending radius wouldn't work. And they did not want to adjust kind of the building footprint or other parameters.
But the, the turning radius doesn't mean anything if there are no roads out there. That's the part I'm not getting, Chris. There's nothing currently there. The turning radius could be anything. I mean, we're, we're, we're wedging, we're wedging this thing in and I don't think we're being flexible enough, given that we have sort of a master plan out there. That's not really a master plan yet. So I just want to make sure that we are not confining some stuff that we shouldn't be doing because, like I said, there's nothing there right now. You can change any road, any way right now with, I mean, right.
I get what you're saying, but I think we, we, the problem is we have moved farther down the road with Alta Verde two. I mean, Alta Verde two is in the final stages of design based upon the layout of this area, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, the building.
The roads are going in and we, so what we did was then we created this area that we were going to have a nonprofit campus at the front of this that was surrounded by these roads that, that had been designed. And everything was designed for Alta Verde two, and then we had this there. I think it would cause, I'd like to see what else can happen. I mean, what's, what are we, are we concerned that more about the loading dock and that they're making concessions for a new building that shouldn't have to be made? And, and where can we look at that?
I mean, yeah, that's part of it. I mean, I think, you know, I think Jay and Dick bring up some good points about the, about the, you know, the chimney feature, whatever it is. I mean, I, this should be pretty easy. And it sounds like there are things that are being forced. Really understand there's a why, I mean, they're.
I think it would help to just know, like, is this pretty, are, you know, is FERC happy with this? Is it going to work? Is it going to fulfill everything or do they have a lot of concerns?
You know, I, I will ask that question. I guess that I had a meeting with two of those people on Friday and their, they had other concerns that had nothing to do with this, more about the fill that we're building on and how the structural fill is occurring and will address. But they never want, I mean, they referenced how this loading dock will work and that they, they felt that. I don't know if they feel that they were kind of pushed into this by the town or not. And if they did, they certainly didn't relay that to me. But I haven't been that intimately involved here, so I don't know.
Part of it was to the fill question is in terms of trying to optimize the site for having, you know, space for the, the FERC and, and Building Hope as well as, you know, future, you know, up to two potential pad sites, maybe being consolidated in the one. But just understanding, not trying to get into that filler as much as we, I think they, it was my understanding that they, that we wanted the building to be kind of on the far southern end, just to, you know, reduce building costs and preserve more of the site for additional functions.
It has been subdivided. The roads have been platted. Alta Verde two, you know, Alta Verde one is going to get a CO soon. Alta Verde two is about to have building permits issued. So the circulation patterns have been set. The bus routes have been studied and, and that has sort of been determined, which is sort of kind of has confined, confined the site. Definitely. And then having to bring an 18 wheeler into the site is not the easiest thing.
See a little bit where Eric's going, like we've got sort of a blank slate and, you know, like I don't, the road B looks a little bit challenging as, you know, folks are trying to get across the road with kids and groceries and that sort of thing. If they're, they're parking over there and it's like, it, it's kind of, I feel like we've got an opportunity to make sure we get this right and that the user experience for the folks going there is, is as good as it can be given the site. And then also the folks that are working there, like, does it, does it just work from like a day to day use perspective? And is this the, you know, do we just?
Exactly.
Get it to make sure that experience is great.
You know, I was on planning commission when we did a couple of work sessions on this and there, there were no concessions made. They, they were getting everything they wanted at the time. This is a building that was designed very purposefully where to the point of where users of the building hope wouldn't really interact with the, with the users of the food pantry. And like, everything was really, I was so impressed by that team, that design team that presented to us then. And so I think considering this as an after items, the design as an afterthought, I think is, I don't think that's accurate. There are areas on there that you can't even build on because they're fill, um, that we were working around during the work sessions and.
But we're on top of some of those now. That's part of it. We're on top of part of the places that's going to need more structural fill.
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
We don't know. I need.
What is road, like the parking area next to road B? That's for who?
It, within the center of the P.
Yeah.
That's shared parking between Alta Verde, where there's eight, eight spaces required for Alta Verde and 20 required for the FERC. And then there's, there's 14 floating spaces. And I think it's the intent for those to be primarily used by employees of the, the 20 spaces to be used by the employees of both the FERC and Building Hope and reserve the close in spaces for the, the clients of the building.
And Gorman committed to building those, which was nice.
No, that's great. It just seems. Oh, that's somebody outside.
Um, I guess we haven't, to my knowledge, heard from the, the applicants that.
Maybe we could.
They're having an issue with.
Have a seizure that keeps going, so it's.
This, this site as proposed. I guess this evening I would ask them that question to see if they do have a concern or if we're just assuming they do.
Them to get the building that they want, it's most functional for them.
But there, there's still some stuff, and I know we looked at this before, but the P is, seems sort of ridiculous to me. There's a lot of road out here that doesn't do anything. Okay.
Well, I think having the limited viewpoint is a little bit of the problem because I feel like if we had, you know, Alta Verde and the.
Can you bring it tonight?
Yeah, I feel like it would give some perspective that maybe it's hard to see.
Part of the planning for Alta Verde one because of the bus circulation.
Can you bring the big map tonight when we look at this?
Probably the, the, the clearest document is the most recent subdivision, which platted the right of ways and kind of the, the parcels.
You can just bring it so we can look at it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
I'll work with Helen to get it so we can get on the screen. And they can reach out to Peter Joyce and the team is to make sure they're here for questions from you guys.
That'd be great.
Good. Other questions? Nope, thank you. All right, maintenance policy for deed restricted neighborhoods.
Again. Housing staff is bringing the back the maintenance policy to town councils for more feedback. So given the change of council, since this was presented unbelievably in November of 2020, of 2020. We left all the, the history in the document so that it would be clear where we started from and why this is even coming about. So this revised, the biggest parts that are revised in this really are what council had asked for at the time, which was more buckets, less time. If you recall, we were at seven years and 12 years. So we created four buckets and didn't go over 10 years for this revision. There was also a lot of conversation about a potential depreciation schedule, which is what the county does for their maintenance policy. We did talk to the county about that and how it was being managed and if it was difficult. So they said they have three buckets and they do a depreciation from, you know, the start of it all the way down to zero. So a 20 year item would still get 10% back at 19 years as an example. They do have less than a hundred properties that could qualify for the maintenance policy that they have. Whereas we have five times that and are just adding more. So it does create a little bit of a difficulty for homeowner to figure out where they would fit in. Also kind of a management on our side for staff to manage where they, where they, their item fits in and how much they could recoup. So, really, and we did change one item from the last, from when it was initially presented. Just a reminder, Valley Brook, Vicks Landing, Maggie Point, Blue 52 and Gibson Heights, a majority of those have already signed on to a new deed restriction, what we've always called our preferred deed restriction, which does limit real estate commission and resale value. So originally Gibson Heights was put up in Wellington one and could recoup more because they do, uh, they are required to, uh, there, for their exterior maintenance where the, the others are town homes and duplexes and don't have that. Realize that that was probably going to start to increase costs a little bit more than what we were prepared for, meaning increasing their resale value. So we did put that with everybody else. So that's a change from the last one. But the biggest part is really moving the buckets. And then we added this in order to potentially look at kind of a slight depreciation, items that were a little bit more expensive. We tried to put in two different buckets so they could get a hundred percent back in a shorter amount of time, 50% back as it got further down. So something like a roof. We did base this on a lot of the half life of an item, so a roof, most of them are about 20 years. There are some products out there that are going 30 years. So this may need some revision in the future or something that we could look at as a one off if somebody came in with a situation like that. But so a roof could, you could recoup 50% of it at the five year mark, or sorry, a hundred percent of the five year mark, 50% of the 10 year mark. Given that the second half of that life, the next owner or future owners may have to have that same expense. Questions?
Questions?
Five, so they wouldn't have to just sign on to the new housing guidelines? Individuals that wanted to benefit from the maintenance policy would have to completely switch over to our preferred covenant?
A great question. So for Wellington one, Wellington two, Lincoln Park and Vista Point, there would be a requirement to sign the new preferred covenant, um, which makes all those changes, which makes it allowable to give the percentages for the maintenance plan. So in, in most cases, especially Wellington one, where they have, the covenant allows for a 7% real estate commission, which is higher than anything we see. That's reducing that to, to 2% or 5% could be used for maintenance. And to clarify that too, because I've had this question come up, that 5% is based on that owner's purchase price. Whereas capital improvements are based on the original purchase price. There's slight difference in that. So it does reset with each owner. But once that new deed restriction is signed for a property, that continues to be the new deed restriction that would continue with that property. So since Valley Brook, Vicks Landing, Maggie Point, Blue 52, Gibson Heights, almost all of them, there's a couple stragglers that didn't sign on, but they could before they decided to sell, to be able to take care, to take advantage of this. They already point to our guidelines, which we will, in the future, be calling that housing division rules and regulations where this would live. So there, there are already set up that way. It's just defining this part of it, what the buckets are and how it works for someone to be able to take advantage of it. So it's a little bit of both.
Makes sense?
Yeah. Is there a minimum, minimum time of ownership? I'm just thinking of like someone that lives in a Wellington one house for 20 years, they get 5% of their purchase price. If that turned, if that same house turns over every two years, do they get, does that happen 10 times? Do they get to add the 5% maintenance fee onto it? Does that make sense?
It does. Technically, the, technically the answer is yes. But what we would be looking at is as owners change over and a property sells is what maintenance items the previous owner took advantage of so that we would know where they fit in. So we would write into the, the rules that a, a new owner wouldn't be able to take advantage of that same maintenance item until it's reached its full life. So that we could avoid situations of changing just because of, you know, because you like a different countertop or you want different cabinets. It really should be a maintenance item that you're changing it because it needs to. And so that's what would hopefully keep that at a minimum. We don't actually see turnover of that right now. Obviously no one knows what the future could hold, but our deed restricted properties are turning over at a. Right now, obviously, no one knows what the future could hold, but our deed restricted properties are turning over at a very low rate. Even now, and, and that's been the history since Wellington One started.
And do you find with any of the properties that are currently at two percent real estate commission? Do you have people trouble? You know, it says in the report that, you know, the real estate profession serves a purpose and is encouraged. Is that, do you have any issues finding? You know, that people are willing to sell or buy, be the representative at two percent.
We haven't.
Saying that you can only pay them two percent. We're saying you can only add two percent to the price.
So what do people usually do?
To negotiate who you use and what you pay them. So I mean, there are, the housing authority will do them for, I think, two percent, right?
And that's where that comes from. That's how that's all integrated. So you can, a homeowner can always sell with the housing authority as a representative and, and have that two percent. The original covenant for all of the properties that are listed in that last tier, they all started at one percent actually. And I don't know the exact date, but it changed to two percent. And a lot of that was because of the, our real estate community saying one percent just doesn't. Work because you have to remember that one percent was covering some closing costs and, and the standard closing costs as well. So it was really difficult actually with that. When, now that we've gone to two percent, I know it's only one percent, but it does make a difference. Especially with these, some of these higher priced units and we aren't seeing, we're not getting feedback now from realtors. Saying that that two percent isn't worth it.
Thank you.
Not every house sale is represented that way. Some use attorneys and transaction brokers and do it a little bit differently. And like Rick said, somebody could pay the three percent or the six percent that's more standard in a market rate home. It's just what they're allowed to recoup on the sale price.
Understood.
If someone were to sign on to it retroactively, like they've been in the home for a while, when would the timeframe start? For like say roofs, for mechanical rooms, when they signed on or when the, when the home was built? Or they moved in?
It's really based on sale, sale date. So it would be the number of years prior. And what maintenance item was done when it, when you actually go to sell. So somebody could sign, somebody could sign the new covenant, say a Wellington homeowner could sign the new covenant. In a couple of weeks before they close or a month before they close. There is a stipulation in the covenant, in the policy, when we've done this before, when people change their covenant. That if there is a current sale or a current, you know, sale pending, that both the buyer and the seller have to agree to the new covenant. So that's how we've done it in the past. I was going through all those documents and preparing if this, if we go this route. And that was something that was done. But a homeowner could decide to do it right before they sell and we would look at their maintenance items that they put in place.
But how about a homeowner that's been there for five years and they, they sign, they sign on to the new covenant? And then so that, so some of these things, it's, you know, it's been in existence for five years. They lived there for another ten years. And so that's up to fifteen years. Does, does that fifteen years kick in, in the timeframe of, of things that are. Viable to be replaced or to be insured? And I, this is kind of like, this is kind of like maintenance insurance, isn't it?
Kind of, yeah. But you're not, you're not authorizing those maintenance items until there's a sale pending. So just kind of like, just like the resale calculations, we look at resale. Base exactly on when it's going to sell, when that, when that closing date is. This would be the same. And there would be an application process, just like we do for capital improvements. We would want pictures, receipts, all of those things to verify everything was done.
Cleared it up. Thanks. Makes sense. Yeah. Other questions?
Yeah, I think this is fantastic. Any concerns about having kind of the, the five percent at Wellington One, three percent at Lincoln Park? Three percent at Gibson Heights on the permitted maintenance allowance? Do you feel like that should maybe, and I know it bumped the price up, but should just be the same percentage across all of those?
It could be. The hard part with that is the price creep. We're already seeing that in Wellington One because of any properties that have turned over. And that's, there's a lot of times where that seven percent has been utilized. And so, you know, thirty thousand dollars is going to, straight to commission. And so in, in those cases, we're trying very hard to do as much of a trade off as we could. But we can't really take that away from Wellington One. That would be the hard part. Five percent, you know, and those are our oldest. Properties, obviously, but hopefully they're there for a long time and everybody gets into that category being older. But I see what you're saying. I, I think if we got into Vista Point, Wellington Two and Lincoln Park, all having five percent. You're going to see a higher price creep. You, you can see in the examples that they're getting closer and closer.
And maybe it makes sense to have a higher number of Wellington One in the short term, just because they're older and they need that. So, yeah, that makes sense to me. Because the price creep is important to keep that in check. With the update of the restrictive covenant. I was talking to some folks today about, you know, Silverthorne as an example, has a priority lottery for folks that are applying for deed restricted. Properties if they have lived in Silverthorne for a year or if they have worked in Silverthorne for a year. They, if there's multiples, then they go into a priority lottery. When we're updating the restrictive covenant. I'd love for us to kind of at some point discuss that. And then if there's any other add-ons into, you know, you're getting a shot to update the restrictive covenant. With these owners, I think there's going to be demand for this maintenance policy. Are there other items that would be valuable to add in on there? And kind of take care of all that at once.
And we've always looked at that kind of priority and lottery situation on initial sale. Once you get into private sales, after that, it is a little bit more difficult. We have added into our, just recently into our housing helps and buy down covenants. The option for the town to require a lottery based on market. It's something that the county has been doing. So we put that in. It's not automatic. But if there were a time that the market was so stringent that. You know, there were hundreds of people looking for one property, kind of where we are right now, the town or the, the county in, in this situation. Could enact that part of the covenant to say that they're going to require it, go to lottery.
Yeah, well, I think what it does is it kind of protects our investment in our employee housing, right? And it kind of guarantees that. I think the other thing it does is, you know, I've heard stories of, hey, the used couch is getting sold for. X. And, and so it kind of, I, I think the lottery, you know, if there's enough demand, it kind of strips that out of it. It's like, hey, it's, it's, it's an even playing field and isn't artificially increasing the price. So just, I think, stuff we should think about.
And the housing committee could flush that out some more. I mean, we've had a lot of discussions over the years about that and we haven't. Because we have a, a, we just haven't gotten on the road yet to tell people who they get to sell it to. Versus them knowing who they, they have somebody they want to sell it to. You know, and so it just, I, I don't know if, you know, if we're ready to go there yet or not as a group.
I think it'd be an interesting discussion and we, it sounds like we're going to have a window here with a restrictive covenant being updated and.
I think the problem with doing that retroactively, like I'd be interested in seeing some of the future things happen that way. Is that I feel like that would. Possibly entice people not to opt into the covenant. And I think this covenant is a really good thing. We want people to do the maintenance. We want people to, you know, do the upkeep now because it's been, I mean, we've put a lot of money into this as a town. And I just think that if we make it too complicated or too. I don't know, too many different moving parts and pieces, people won't want to opt into this. And I can see them saying, well, I'm just not going to opt into this, but if you'll still pay for that, you just pay me on the side for this, like creating the. Couch for two thousand dollar scenario. So I do, I think it's definitely worth talking about and maybe for moving forward. But if we're talking about the opting in at this point, I'm a little less supportive of adding, keeping a lot of things on to it.
Cool. Good stuff.
I tend to agree with it. Nice job striking that balance. I mean, we're trying to keep price creep manageable and. And have it, you know, to incent people to actually get the maintenance done. So good job.
Anything else? So this is administrative rule. So there will be no vote on this. This is just.
Right. And this is just to get feedback because there was such a big change with the buckets and number of years and all of that.
Great, great job, Cory.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Short term rental overlay district discussion. A couple of things is, no, come on down, sir. As we get started, there will be. Public hearing, if you're interested, tonight at seven, which is just our open public hearing. This is not legislatively drafted yet. Potentially the next meeting, although we'll see, we are trying to rush this because we have had some. Had some requests that we, we try to button this stuff up. At that meeting, there will be ample time for public hearing also at the night meeting for the two, two readings. So we have gotten about fifty letters a day lately. So we've heard, you know, a lot of people's concerns on both sides of the discussion. I will, before we start, I just want to make one editorial comment. There have been some. Outcries that we haven't compromised at all with what's going on. I will tell you that this overlay district is the compromise piece. If you're going to make hissy noises, you can leave. This is an adult conversation. You may not agree with me, but this is still an adult conversation. We could leave this at the twenty two hundred cap and just be done with it. That has already been legislatively dra- drafted. We decided that it would be in the town's interest to go forward in this and have certain areas that are allowed greater flexibility. In licensing. That's what this is about. That twenty two hundred number was talked about, argued about. People from both sides of the, of the fence talked about it. That's where we ended up legislatively. This is the second piece that is trying to come to some compromise with some of these areas. That. People feel necessarily should be in this. Staff has put a ton of time in this. The council has put a time, ton of time in this. We have met with. I mean, I've met with a ton of people over the last couple of months about this. So. You know, everybody's been working hard on this. So with that, who's leading, sir?
Yeah, I'm gonna start us out. Thank you so much. And also for the audience, I just wanted to note because there does seem to still be some confusion out there that. If you have an existing license, this does not get rid of that existing license. So with that. At this work session, we want to discuss with the council, the cap numbers in the three zones and the resort properties. The land use district ten. And entertaining the concept of migration of licenses. At the last work session on June twenty eighth, the council. Reached a consensus on the zone one and zone two, which definitions, which we called option B at that time. So that has been added into the packet toward the end of the memo for everyone's reference and relabeled as selected overlay option. So that is a consensus point that we just wanted to include in there. And then also a consensus was reached regarding the resort properties definition. So that is at the end of the memo. We weren't going to discuss that today, but if you have questions, let us know. So with the license cap scenarios, what we did was in the packet, put in a, three options. In a chart and that was a lower cap percentage option, a general alignment. Which was reached by the tourism overlay task force recommendation. And then if all resort in zone one properties were unlimited STR allowances. So that chart is up on the screen right now. So that's A is below, B is the task force and C is the hundred percent. And one in resort. So what we've done is we do have a. Sort of plug and play chart available for us tonight to use. And if the council wants to kind of play with those numbers, we can do that. And. We just wanted to put some examples in here.
I might suggest that we might want to kind of reverse Elise how we're tackling this. Because I, I'm not sure that we should look at numbers until we finalized area. Because that will change what's existing. Because what you're seeing on the existing in this scenario is. As, as it is currently drawn and what you have agreed upon, right? And then you asked us to look at the potential of some potential expansion in the L U D ten. And that, that does, those numbers are not shown in, in that particular graph. And so maybe we need to talk about ten a little bit first before, and see if we're going to kind of put that to bed.
Thanks, Rick. So I'm. The consensus for zone one, the definition, the last meeting was really regarding those land use districts that talked about bed base. Lodging and ski area adjacency. And when we look at land use district ten. This is sort of contrary to that zone one definition criteria. So land use district ten does not include any wording regarding bed base lodging or ski area adjacency. And in fact, it talks about low density, low impact residential development, providing greater opportunity for the permanent resident. So. We do have a lot of differences there from the criteria we used for zone one. So absence of that, we, we know that the council wanted us to explore ten further. So in absence of the lodging description and the high density residential description, we looked at the. The adjacency to any ski runs and ski area terminals, including Alpine and Nordic ski runs. So we looked at two hundred and fifty feet within and a hundred and fifty feet within those. Vicinities for properties and came up with a chart of units within that. And also provided to you the existing short term rental licenses where, that were in those areas. So those are, we did that by property boundaries. So if something hit just the property boundary, that line. Or if it hit the actual. Property, a property line within a subdivision and we were, if we were to include the entirety of the subdivision. So we did it a few, a couple of different ways.
I mean, we really felt like this opened a can of worms that we didn't think we should open.
So that resulted in.
This in the areas outside ten even, right?
Ended up taking us into four additional land use districts that also don't have any. Of the criteria we used for land use district one. Zone one, sorry. And so we are recommending that we do not go with this option. That we don't incorporate land use district ten or anything adjacent to the ski, this type of analysis with the ski area. Runs or terminal.
Does that put it in zone three then?
It does. Yeah. So just keeping true to the intent of zone district one, that would be staff's recommendation. So again, like Rick said, that would add to the capacity numbers that weren't included. In that first topic. So I don't know if we want to stop here and talk about.
Let's have a discussion about that piece first. Who wants to start?
I really wanted to look at induced ten, just that western side. I think the language. Induce guidelines, it doesn't point to those very clear black and white equitable building blocks we're using for these. So I do appreciate you looking into them. As we're looking at it, I mean, I appreciate the different approaches. Looking proximity ski area terminal, Nordic run is not something I'd support because then we'd also have to look at the Highlands. That was our criteria. So I appreciate staff time on this, but I wouldn't support including ten as presented. It is a difficult area that I. It's proximity to the ski area. I feel like it would be better suited for more of a zone two. But that there's not that equitable qualifier is where I struggle with.
What, what's the S T R saturation in land use district ten?
Christie's Heights, thirty seven, twenty S T R.
It is fifty four percent.
And, and what was the, what was the reasoning that we did fifty percent in zone two? What did we, what did we spell out in two that made that?
It's very close to the existing amount. But that was the recommendation from the task force was to, that that zone would sort of remain static as it currently is. And so that's a very close number to what currently exists there.
So what would be the? What would be the? what would be the problem with moving 10 into two?
Criteria for two was also, and Sarah, correct me if I'm speaking, but that it's 12 U P A or greater. So the density in this case isn't there in most cases unless we separate, started separating things out. And then there was some parameters drawn in zone dis, in zone two as well.
Good. I mean, could you do it by S T R percentage?
And maybe would that be a question for Kirsten too?
Yeah.
That's
Getting down to neighborhood by neighborhood.
Well, it's not neighborhood by neighborhood because it's the whole land use district.
But it doesn't meet the other qualifiers.
Right.
It'd be other land use districts that also have high percentages that are not on this side of town or in this general area.
But we do use the geographic boundaries in defining two in general. And there are, I looked quickly, there's a couple other land use areas that do hit the 50% threshold. It was 25 and 30.5, which are all towards the ski area, but.
That's what I'm wrestling with is that's a space where you want short-term rentals. And from like a B T O destination management perspective, we want that housing stock. You need single families in the short-term rental pool. But I, you know, I agree with Rick, it's complicated on coming up with a justifiable metric to drive that. And, and the underlying land use guidelines from what you read to me earlier, it doesn't get us there. So is, you know, yeah. It's tricky. And we can all look at that and it makes sense to have S T Rs up there. But yeah, the guidelines don't, don't back it.
Other discussion about this?
Initially, initially, we should, I think we should rely heavily on the lugs. I mean, that's something that's been defined and quantified. I mean, I think we can be flexible and tweak some things, but I think that's how, how things were defined years ago. And also I think it's more defendable.
Dick?
I agree with Jeffrey.
I think that when it comes to land use district 10, that consistency and fairness should be top of mind and that the metric should be used, the lugs. And so I, I don't support land use district 10 in general, or the proximity to a ski lift, ski terminal or ski run. I guess my question for staff is, is there any master plans in land use district 10 that override the lugs in that particular master plan?
About a bed base or something?
Is there like a shock hill master plan that came on? Would that have any effect on the lugs in that subdivision?
I mean, I, I guess I'm trying to, as far as like, would the master plan talk about short-term rentals in the master plan?
Or bed base or anything to that effect?
I don't think up there.
But also I don't think how, how it would have gotten accepted if it wasn't consistent with the. Yeah.
Well, if it was a development agreement, it could.
Oh.
But there are no separate development agreements in any of those neighborhoods. Those were all.
Those are low density, large lots, subdivisions.
How many units are in 10? You know?
1030.
It certainly lives and breathes more like zone two, just from the ratios there, right?
Other conversation?
I just feel like this, these three areas in particular, 25, 30.5 and 10.
Where's 25? What'd you say, 25?
25.
25 is down, yeah.
That Main Street Junction? Yeah.
Yeah.
I have his upper warriors mark.
And 30.5 is upper. Yeah, well, we've heard from him.
I think for me, this part of the conversation is really difficult because my greatest concern is that we sort of have the balance. And so the cap is most important to me. The overlay is trying to get short-term rentals, you know, where they make sense and where they don't exacerbate crowding issues and traffic. And certainly, obviously, employee housing is always part of this conversation. But I think the, the thing that I'm weighing is adding three more lugs and then keeping the same number of licenses. But then, you know, having more units who are vying for those licenses. If that's better, or if having, you know, kind of a true 50%, which is what we have currently.
Well, I mean, you, you could go down that route of adding 30.5, 25 and 10 to zone two. Right? And you're gonna, and then all you're gonna, probably you're gonna still keep somewhere close to that number that many of you have in mind for one, you're, you know, and so you'll, two will be a higher percentage, which is intent is to be, maybe it's a 50%, which is just gonna leave less in the rest of the town. So, you know, and if that, if that's kind of the direction that we've taken and a lot of stuff is let's put them where we think they should be. And so you're really just shifting them over time and it's going to take time to get them there. But it is, you know, it, it probably is putting more, if, if you think they're more likely to have those than, you know, be outside in zone three, then that's, I would say go put them in two.
The total for those three?
Be around 500.
500 total and there's?
S T Rs.
S T Rs. 25, there's 27 S T Rs currently and then 30.5.
Say that again, how many were there?
I'm sorry.
In 25?
And in 10, you said there was three?
343.
And then in 30.5?
There's 58.
If we sum all of those, the percentage will still be in that 50% range?
It'll be above.
Yeah, it'll be slightly above. District 25 is at 64% and 30.5 is at 52.7%.
Okay, so it'll pull it up a little.
Not much because it's only 27 units. What's the aggregate percentage?
I mean, I, I, I get the argument and I, and I agree with it that, you know, it is, it makes sense for him to go here. I, I, I'm concerned with justification for this move. And then how do we answer when we get all the phone calls? But what about this property? And what about this property? And what about this property? And what about this property? It looks, feels, it's just like the others you just did. And, and I don't know how we maintain the fairness, which is why I, I agree with Jeffrey that, you know, we stick with the lugs because it's fair. It's consistent and but, you know, I, I, I'm not opposed to these being in two. I, I'm just struggling with the justification to do it.
Well, I think we leave, I mean, if, if everybody wants to go down the road, I think we leave it up to staff to look at the justification. That's not what we were trying to do with, with ski runs and stuff like that. You know, similar language to what we did in two.
Right? Yeah. I think that's, that's good.
I mean, not saying that we can, but I think it's worth an examination.
Yep.
We're drafting a language around. I'd rather use the zoning to determine where our zones are versus taking our zones and trying to make language that
correlates them.
Correlates that. And because it, it does, it comes to fairness and transparency and clarity.
And then in my mind, the fairness there is those zones we're considering and some others are part of that greater than 50% existing. You know, our land use guidelines are have straight, they're a bit outdated. Where in some cases they work at that building block, like there's opportunities we can explore other options. And I see our justification is west of nine, closer to the ski area. It advances town goals. And if a qualifier that could selectively add certain areas is that currently they're above 50% saturation of short-term rentals. But again, that's a question if that's defensible and if we think that's equitable enough.
Can you go to the map and show us what west of nine wouldn't be included? What land use guidelines?
Well, it'd be 20, which ones end up in three, I guess, is the better question is what I'm thinking.
Which ones would not? Sorry.
Either way.
So here's the current ones. In the darker blue. 10 is right here.
Yeah.
30.5 and 25. So it would be a lot of warriors mark.
So it's still a lot of line drawing.
Yeah.
Potentially district one. And I don't know how, if you wanted to go farther north, nine, two and nine.
District 25 is on the east side of nine.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that Main Street Junction?
It's Junction, yeah.
Well, I would be okay with, with staff exploring that. You know, this drags it out, but.
You know that there are more land use districts that are over 50%, so.
West of nine? Or yes, west of nine?
There's 30.4.
Yeah, 30.4 is.
A handful of units.
I mean, going this direction is exactly what we at the committee originally started out with. And we were sort of warned against.
Okay.
As just being less clear and defensible.
Do that again, Kelly.
What did the task force come up with as far as this question goes?
Well, the task force did exactly this, which is kind of looked at what the location was and how many short-term rental licenses existed. And that's how we developed the original map that we sort of started with. And we've pulled back from because legally it's less defensible and just, you know, it's choosing one side of the street and not the other side of the street, a lot more than just going with the text and the land use guidelines.
We've made a full circle.
We have.
Of course.
No government conversation would be.
So you're saying no?
Correct.
Yes.
You're saying yes, look, look at it, Terry, no?
No.
Doesn't matter. I guess not. All right, let's move to the next topic then, which is migration. I think migration is a cumbersome. I would rather just leave these things in their buckets and work to it that way.
Agree.
I could tell you that, I mean, some of you asked, how many units have we lost? It is not easy to determine when we lose a unit. Somebody sells their home, they don't immediately call us and say, I don't need my S T R anymore. We have to kind of backtrack through rep when we get that and it's not, it doesn't happen right away. And I just think that that is, it's not like, you know, a couple of hundred of these, like some places, we have a lot. And I, I I would prefer us not to mess with migration. Create each zone separately. So if you, you're gonna have a cap in zone one, then let's deal with that. And then we then will know each, we'll be able to give updates at some point of what those numbers are in each zone, but scares us. I think if we get percentages right, we don't need it.
Right?
Yeah.
The percentages, but then we're going to translate them to.
They're gonna translate to actual numbers.
Which we start out by looking at percentages.
Well, I just feel like it's really important that everyone acknowledge that we are then, I mean, existing S T Rs, we have 4,343. And that's considerably more than the 2,200 plus 1,700 that we had originally discussed and anticipated being at. And I just think it's important. It was the 2,200 of our cap. And then at that time, we had 1,700 in the exempt pool, which is 3,700. So I just think that it's.
3,900.
39. Yeah.
And all of those are under, under that. Everything we were looking at is under that.
But we won't get there for a long time, is what I'm trying to say. It's like, so we're gonna operate at, you know, around 400 above.
It's
For.
Where we are right now.
A long time.
Which is why I propose as a compromise that we look at the caps zone by zone. And we open up the ability to replace licenses.
Oh, yeah. I feel like that has to occur. Otherwise, this whole thing is.
Otherwise, we're back to the ordinance and this whole process was a waste of time, which I don't want to have happen.
Yeah.
So everybody's good with not doing migration? Okay, Sarah, what's next?
Back to the cap.
Who wants to? Go first?
Well, the one thing I just want to explore, because several times it was brought up in the overlay committee discussions, was that there was a very strong feeling that zone one would be very unlikely to get above 85%. And so saturation.
Is that with or without the resort component?
Without.
Okay.
Oh, should we start at the resort component?
No, it's kind of where you go. That's fine.
And so I guess, you know, in looking at cap scenario B, that was sort of what came out of the committee. And I do feel like that's the one change that I would like to have us consider as a group is increasing zone one to 85% rather than 80% because hopefully in effect that would create enough liquidity, liquidity in the licenses that there wouldn't be a rush for licenses because 85% would be, you know, it would allow enough licenses into the pool.
Would it be helpful to, can we go to the one? So we plug in when somebody's saying that, what it looks like? All right. Right there, you'd be saying, yeah, go. Kelly, when the, the, the second.
Because the other, the other two aren't, aren't. That's just the calculator.
Yeah.
But isn't zone three, oh, there, it's existing because zone three should be.
That's existing.
And then we haven't changed those.
Yeah.
Can we just, yeah, can we start with the numbers that were all? And then for zone three, I mean, my, it, the cap is important. I do believe that's the right direction for the community. And so right now it's 15% in this cap scenario B. But I would like to explore reducing that to 10% to accommodate the movement to zone one.
Can you guys sum the zone one, two and three, like just above the total there, just so we got an eye on the number? Yeah, right in there.
Resort, is that what you want?
Yeah, right in there. Be awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
And Kelly, I also think that when we phase in the, the second phase of the pricing increase for the licenses and, you know, for the licenses and, you know, January one twenty-three. I think that will, we'll see, I don't know the number, but we'll see certainly some drop off of those that just got licenses as place holders. Between the price going up and there being ample number of licenses available in zone one for, for natural real estate churn, for, for buying and selling. I think those people that bought licenses just to have them will not renew them. So I, I, you know, and I, I'm hearing from the, many of the real estate community that they, they really need that ability to, and to, to feel confident when they're selling a property that, that, that. Can get a license in zone one. And I think that what you just proposed will accomplish that.
You're saying eighty-five and. If you go to ninety there. That bottom twenty-two hundred number.
I don't know because they're not. Having a problem with.
If you're fifteen percent on the zone three, you get right to that twenty-two, and just above the twenty-two.
Put that in and see what it looks like, would you?
Sorry, my um buttons weren't working, what am I putting in?
Three to fifteen percent.
They're working now.
Yeah, I like the liquidity in zone one and, and the ability for folks to be able to sell and the new buyer to be able to get a license. I mean, that's, I think that's one of the stressors on, on the real estate market. I mean, zone three. For a long time, um.
So in zone one, we have a late waitlist of twenty-nine and at eighty-five percent we would instantly open up two hundred fifty-seven licenses. And I think that's above what would happen, but I do appreciate encouraging movement in that area.
Waitlist of twenty-nine?
Mm hmm, in zone one.
Would everybody like to see the waitlist numbers?
Yeah, sure.
Don't.
About those numbers? Not those numbers, but the other numbers.
Percentage numbers?
Percentage numbers. I, I think I can, I could live with eighty-five percent in zone one.
Can you throw those waitlist numbers on this, this spreadsheet somewhere, just to help me kind of see and think through it real quick? Thank you.
And maybe if we, if we're starting to lean there, we could maybe just round those numbers.
Rounding what, I'm sorry?
Let's just go to whatever, you know?
Oh.
Round them up somewhere, round them down or something.
So, and then Kelly just asked about going to a hundred percent in resort, how's, how does everybody feel about that? Is that sort of a separate number?
I prefer ninety-five, but I'm not sure I'm gonna fall on my sword.
I prefer ninety-five as well. Jay, Carol.
Um, I'd like to understand how that would work as new properties come online and what we'd be required to do if.
It's gonna be a hard.
Having master plan.
So it's not, it's not gonna stay.
Yeah, so we're gonna use the seventeen.
Unlimited hundred percent, you're gonna create a, you're basically gonna say that we would allow seventeen eighty right now, today of properties. Now, if you have, you're only using sixteen, so if you have a hundred and twenty, you know, that aren't getting used, those would be up for grabs on a new development. If a new development needs a hundred and fifty, then you got a problem. So they're gonna have to talk to us.
I like the ninety-five on that.
I'm just not real clear on what the impact of having. Well, I guess I like the ninety-five because it's um closer to the cap. And I am just um trying to ensure that, you know, we can have the conference center, the conference centers are working and that we can, you know, respond to some of those needs and off season and during the week business and. But if ninety-five is what it's been, ninety-three point four is what it's at, then it's obviously functioning at that, so ninety-five. I mean, I, I don't think that we're in a place right now that we need more licenses, so ninety-five seems like. Already.
I did, I do wanna remind you about the time share licenses in resort properties that they don't, um, they don't go away because.
Yeah.
Um, so those are, would stay high up.
How, how many new licenses were added um between, you know, during that gray spirit that we had last fall? We added the, uh, we added a property, which was this, where you, we added the village. And so that became a new property that was classified as exempt. And that's what added the majority of your, why we're dealing with a bigger number. We, we were always messing with fifteen something, right, for ever on our exempt properties.
About licenses that were added betw- like after the cap was instituted?
In resort, yeah.
Oh, in resort.
I thought we were always kicking around eighteen hundred for resort.
I mean, we, I mean, most of our resort exempt properties went up because of, we added that one property, right?
It went up because of the village, um, but that was before the cap came in.
Right, that's before, I mean, when we were having those discussions, we talked about that eighteen hundred number. Which is why I'm okay with a hundred percent, I, you know, with everything that we have written to, to get them to that resort classification, I'm okay with a hundred there because you're probably not gonna get more than ninety-five anyway. You know, so.
Yeah.
But it sounds like everybody else is at ninety-five.
I don't think you can get over ninety-five, so I think ninety-five is sufficient.
I, I came, after reading the packet, doing my due diligence, I came in with resort and zone one at a hundred percent number. Just purely, even if it doesn't need it, it's a psychological effect of trying to avoid scarcity in the market. You know, we, we saw what happened with toilet paper, right, during COVID, you know, if there's case scarcity, people hoard it. And so I really believe that the numbers for resort and one should be at a hundred percent of today, seventeen eighty, seventeen ninety-eight. And that zone three, when you look at losing twenty-three hundred licenses, like, what, what are we talking about, like decades, right? Like, what?
It's twelve hundred.
Hundred?
From. Your subtractment from the full unit.
Twelve, uh, four units, okay.
It's still decades.
So, it's maybe a minute. That, just to avoid that part of scarcity and to allow that, not only will the buyer today know that they can go get a license, but they know that they can sell it to somebody that can get a license, I think is a really important part of what we're, the message we're trying to send in that we want our guests to reside where there's tra- infrastructure, transportation, where it's the best guest experience, where they're not gonna get called, uh, the cops aren't gonna call it ten oh one when they're in the hot tub. What concerns me is what Rick was speaking about with future developments that all of that elimination of scarcity, all of that transparency and saying, hey, not only will you be able to get a license, but the person you sell it to will get a license, all goes away with future develop, with additional development.
Unless you make them come in for a development agreement and you cre- increase that number.
But I, I don't know if we can mandate that, right? If there's available units and a future development happens, they're entitled.
Guess it depends where they are too, if they're in the zone or not.
So I guess my big concern, you know, and the article that I read today, the biggest enemy of the housing market is uncertainty. And so I wanted, you know, my, my thought process took to, how do we provide certainty in the zones that we would like our guests to reside? And um I think I, I run into a big problem when it comes to how are we treating future development? Is there a way to put this on current units and?
Not the land.
Correct.
That was not a question for me.
The short answer is yes, um, we could come up with some language, I, I think. Tell me a little bit more about what you're thinking.
A way to ensure that we stay to our number, which is a hundred percent of the current inventory without letting that deteriorate with new inventory.
Um, so, you know, you're challenging a lawyer with numbers here, but basically you're trying to say that we, we want to tackle and address in the code draft, a way to do something to ensure licenses to new development?
No, he's saying the opposite. What he's saying is he doesn't want any new development to have any of these licenses.
Right.
New development would have to come in for a separate development discussion.
Right, like, I, that's what I was trying to say, yeah, so, I mean, I, I do think we have talked a little bit about that there are examples of jurisdictions who say, for example, if you are providing significant community benefits or something that the town sees as offsetting some of the underlying rationale that we're trying to deter here, such as displacement of long-term rental, something along those lines. Then we could craft that in as an agreement in the future to. It depends on whether you wanna allow a certain number or what you wanna do there. Am I answering your question? It does not look like it.
I see what you're saying.
Right.
Craft.
Articulate it better than.
Could you craft language that basically says that if a new development comes online and adds to the units available, that it's not eligible for access to those existing licenses?
Well, you could, I mean, you could put dates and correct me if I'm wrong, but we could, we could establish numbers. And we can establish for, for units constructed or occupied prior to a certain date.
But, yeah, absolutely.
So what we're doing.
That, that would do it then.
You're setting current invent, you wanna look at current inventory. And you wanna create numbers around current inventory. And so everything, the caveat would be that, that, that the numbers we create are based on all uh units constructed and occupied by a certain date in the code. Anything greater than that or newer than that would not be eligible to receive licenses under this code without um, you know, some other mechanism in place. Yeah, but that limits zones one and zones one and two for, you know, infill lots, I mean, there's a little bit of development left in those zones. I'm talking to you there.
Which I think that's.
Talk to you.
Which for me would satisfy where I'm at is to protect what's there.
Yeah.
And if, if we're not gonna go above eighty-five percent, then there's really, in my head, there's no harm in going to a hundred in zone one to allow that absolute transparency and fluidity in the market and allow buyers to feel comfortable in the fact that they'll one day be able to sell it and that it won't, those licenses won't get deteriorated away.
Jay, I think you're, you're on to something here with the hundred percents in both resort and zone one, especially, you know, if it's a built by date. Cuz I, I, I think that is one of the challenges here, right, is that, that messaging and that perception in the public of, of how they're gonna feel buying here or maybe not buying here. And, and so I think that scarcity piece is, you know, that is, in zone one, the ratios are gonna stick in the, you know, near what's at, resort area, same thing. So by, by going up to one hundred percent, the messaging is loud and clear, like, hey, we're open for business. You know, is that gonna cost us a couple hundred licenses? I don't think so.
Well, we can, and we can decrease zone three so that we hit Kelly's cap, has a ring to it, doesn't it?
But then it's like fifteen years until we accomplish this goal to get things back in balance or, or fifty years.
Not necessarily, because we're not looking at going to a hundred percent in, in zone one necessarily in actual units. We've already proven that we're gonna probably hover around eighty-three, eighty-five anyway. But to provide that, the headline, because they're not, they read, no one's gonna read the statute, no one's gonna pull out the register, legislation. It's about like what our priorities are and to, and communication and showing that we are, we are pro-business, we are a friendly place to come, but keeping our values in line by having this cap number, staying true to it and understanding that, no, zone three is for our residents, it's people that live and work here.
Well, I think it, it, it straddles nicely, like, we're a ski town. We want you to come ski and we want you to visit and that, the hundred percent, both those sends that message loud and clear.
I think we send that message in a lot of different areas. We do not need to go to a hundred percent in order to send the message that we're a ski town and come here and ski. I mean, part of enforcing the cap in the first place was to make sure that we maintain our presence as Breckenridge, the town of Breckenridge, which is different from Vale, which is different from these other places that are, you know, and so actually, Vale doesn't even have near the number of short term rental licenses that we do. So I don't think, I think that we are losing focus on, you know, the priorities of the town and the community that we are by distilling it down to, we have to send this message that we're open for business by being a hundred percent short term rental. I mean, I think that's really oversimplifying and losing um a lot of the effort that we put in, in all kinds of different ways. So I understand what you're saying with, with the uncertainty. I think that comment is absolutely right on from all of the professionals who know anything. But at the same time, I'm not willing to give up and say, because ten years ago, we never would have said we'd be at fifty-eight percent of our units in the town of Breckenridge will have short term rental licenses. That would have, we would have said, that would never happen, heads and beds, let's get heads and beds. So to say today, oh, well, we're just gonna hover at seventy-two, seventy-three percent, I think is very short sighted. I think if we, if these numbers aren't managed, Breckenridge is a great place and we will continue to add short term rental licenses above seventy-five percent, above eighty percent. So I think that eighty-five is a good compromise to make sure that we have that check-in. Do we have employees? Do we have, is the situation still in harmony with the community? The product that we all want to deliver, which is, you know, a great ski town that can seat people. You don't wait three hours for a restaurant meal, that, you know, where we can provide that to our employees, that they don't have to drive from Leadville, that they don't have to drive all over. I mean, I think we still need to manage the numbers, I'm, I still firmly believe that.
So what do you feel about, okay, so eighty-five is zone one, what do you feel about resort?
I'm, I'm okay with, um, I mean, they're at ninety-three already, so that's a pretty different conversation. I, in my, you know, research before tonight, I was thinking ninety-five, eighty-five, um, fifty and either ten or fifteen, I can go either way because that one's so far out.
Would you go a hundred in resort?
I'd be fine going a hundred in resort.
Dick?
Yeah, I well said, Kelly, I mean, I feel strongly about eight, not going over eighty-five percent in zone one. For all the reasons Kelly just said, I really prefer ninety-five, but again, I'm not gonna fall on my sword on it. If, if the rest get by else wants a hundred in resort.
And then fifty and?
Fifty and ten or fifteen, depending on where it needs to be for the numbers.
Todd?
Yeah, I think I'm with Jay on the scarcity messaging, um, and that's a shift for me. I like the resort being capped with a language in there, getting added in on a built by date. Yeah, we're getting closer.
So you're hundred, hundred, fifty, and then whatever, whatever.
I'd go, um, I think resort should be at a hundred in supportive of that. To both of those points where we're unlikely to hit the hundred percent, but we would like to have that. Upper parameter for that zone, I would go a little higher. I'd go to ninety in zone one. Fifty and then zone three, we're going to take years to accomplish. I would go for ten percent. Which would bring us a little below the cap, but that's because I do have some hope that we'll figure something out for those other. Brand use areas to open up license, but that just makes me.
Jeffrey.
I'd do eighty-five in zone one, a hundred percent in resort, just because I don't think we'll ever get to be a hundred percent. And then like Dick had mentioned, was it fifteen, ten?
Are you keeping track of all this? Because I started and then I, I lost my place. I'd go a hundred in resort. I'm good with ninety and eighty-five or ninety and one, whatever that, and then fifty and, and, you know, ten or less, depending on, on where. Check out.
But it tells me as we have the majority, that'll do a hundred in resort.
Right.
We doing, are we including the build by date?
Yep.
Okay.
I think.
Is that unanimous?
But on all zones, huh?
No, it has to be everywhere.
Okay.
Can I just, so I just want you to have the language in the current code, which. Says that if a structure for which a building permit was issued in effect at the time of the original cap. Those are able to get licenses, which we need to do for legal reasons. So we would carry that forward. The question is whether you're making that more, more broad or less broad, I think. Would you agree with that?
Do we.
Probably changing the date.
Yeah.
That seems obvious.
The date.
You're always.
Talking about everything from when you took the cap originally to now. You might want to keep that.
Yeah, yes. Well, that. To, it could, it's a good point. It's two different.
Two different dates.
Dates potentially, yeah. But I was trying to say that's the sort of language that we would carry forward and then. If you want to change it a little bit. More broadly.
Or the building permit date be today or when the cap went into place?
Well, so since we put the original cap in, um, we're going to have to make sure that those. Who were issued a permit on that date are still entitled. And then the question is, what are we doing from the date we set new caps? Are we talking from the time period if someone has been issued a permit, which we have to do? Or are you saying you want to make it a little bit more broad than permit issued? I think I heard something more loose like under construction. Correct?
Well, I think that was just a, that was just chatter. I think the permit, whatever the, the languages we use, I think we use that same language.
Yeah.
So it's like at the time, the ordinance goes into effect.
So a hundred percent resort. Who?
So the, the cat, the date would go with the original cap date, correct? Are you going to incorporate, allow for all the construction that's been happening since?
Well.
The original cap.
Whatever it says in that original ordinance.
Yes. Yes.
I agree. So we're keeping the same total cap.
Right. It's the same, it's the same.
Um, you able to provide us with numbers on that and from?
Like what's happened since the cap date?
Right. Or like what's that? If we do that, what would be the potential and not specifically, but just in numbers by zone of what these numbers could go up to? I guess item where there is a building permit issued prior to the first cap. That hasn't yet to be completed, that is eligible for an STR. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that shouldn't be a huge deal. I mean.
Yeah, it'd be.
The number in between.
Probably a hundred, I mean, you're adding to the number of units.
Is that what it was?
Units, permits?
It was whatever we agreed on the first time around. I think it was, was it sixty-five?
It was like sixty-five.
Whatever we agreed the first time. So there, that's already part of the first legislation. So. Okay, so zone one, then you got, you two are at a hundred.
So.
Oh, yeah.
And we have a hundred on zone one.
Yeah. Resort is.
I'm sorry.
So zone one, Jay and Todd are both at a hundred.
Eighty-five.
At zone one now?
Yeah.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. I'll say eighty-five and we'll make it eighty-five there. Can fifty on. Yeah, fifty on two, everybody. And then the remainder to get to the cap number goes into three. Nine hundred and fifty-three will not work.
I meant to add a hundred and fifty-three to these. More like fifteen or so.
A little high.
Fourteen.
I'd rather have those zones on.
I really.
Well, that's, yeah, so that is the question.
Do ten and then do.
I go to ten and go to a hundred in zone one.
Do ten and go ninety in zone one first, before you make the huge jump there.
Indeed.
Go ninety and then, then ten in, in zone three. That's the, that's pretty much. You're on board with that, Carol? Jeffrey?
Yes.
But I think.
All right, so. Can we round?
Let, can we?
Fifty-ten?
I still prefer eighty-five, but I'm not going to vote.
We're not going to get eighty-five.
Huh?
I don't think we have the legs for eighty-five. Yeah.
He's on to something with that hundred percent zone one, but I can get behind the ninety.
Can we round these numbers? Sixteen twenty?
Yep. One thirty-three ninety.
Yeah.
Okay.
Doing my own math.
Good.
The news aren't very great.
Very good. If you are comfortable, we can start draft.
Okay.
Please.
All right. Okay, thank you everyone for being here. Um, we will have um, regular open. Public hearing at seven o'clock tonight. Uh, now we go to.
We have citizen comments are allowed at seven o'clock.
Right, right on the dot.
Just, we wanted a few minutes if we could talk about the concept of land banking. Are we interested in looking at land that we may want to purchase outside of Summit County? That we would be setting on and that we've had some discussions on that in the past and we're not all. On the same page and so. Opportunities and we kind of like, do we want to strike when opportunities present themselves? I think we need to know if we.
Stations outside, we still have other business to do, please. I mean, I'll start. I, I am not a fan of land banking outside of the county. I'll just tell you, I don't, I think it, I think it just goes against. Everything we talk about as far as putting, putting employees.
Within structure.
With buses, with, you know, land banking for solar is one thing, but I, I don't agree with land banking for housing. I know you disagree, so you go next.
Glad you let me jump in there. Um. I would like to explore the idea of land banking outside the county for a couple of different reasons. One, land's much more affordable. Two, you can get bigger chunks of it. Three. In the housing plan, it talks about, you know, what, what are we at? Twenty-seven percent of current workforce lives in the basin. We want that to get up to fifty percent. Fifty percent still have to live outside of the basin. And my worry is as you go north towards Frisco. Maybe we can invest in Lake Hill with the county, but that one's having some pretty significant infrastructure challenges. You know, if you go, there's not much, and I've looked, right? Like I've spent a decade looking at dirt. For open space and, and, and housing. There, there's not big chunks of it. In Silverthorne. There is north of Silverthorne, but I think the drive to Breck from north of Silverthorne isn't going to work. When you go towards Keystone, again, there's just not, there's just not the dirt there. I, I, I think I, I'd like to be able to maybe have a conversation with folks in Park County. Have staff have conversations and just being able to bring things to this council to. To try and creatively figure out how we're going to house that fifty percent. And do I think, do, do I want all our employees living over the past? No. But I think there's, there would be demand for it with a subset of our population that it would serve them. And I think it's a, an affordable way to serve a chunk of our potential employees. So just want to explore it.
Dick.
I would just, I agree with everything you said, Todd, and I would just add, it, it, it is the reason for the successes we've had today. In our community, in our valley, is that the people before us had the foresight to land bank. And um, it's the only reason we've been in as successful as we have and, and quite frankly. So many other communities envy where we're at with having land. And I think we need to do the, that for those. Down the road who are dealing with the other fifty percent or just sheer trying to have workforce housing at all. So I, I think, I don't want to do it. I want to be transparent about it. So I, you know, I want to. You know, I don't want to go in with, with, you know. Corporations and buy it and then all of a sudden disclose it's us. I think it needs to be a partnership with probably Park County or wherever we do it. So. And probably Summit County as well. So, um, but that's my feeling.
I am definitely interested in exploring and I agree with um, what's been said. I'm just leaving him out in the cold. I just think, I mean, we, there, we're very definite valley. And we don't have to ever do anything with it, but to have it, I think now is the time we do not want to look back and say. Should have done that ten years ago.
Should have, would have, could have. Jeffrey?
I agree with you.
Carol?
I definitely wouldn't prioritize it as we look to solutions, but I'm supportive of looking onto it, holding on to it and letting councils twenty years from now. Deciding what our community needs.
I.
You're a Kremlin girl.
Originally, when I, when I, Todd and I spoke about this months ago. And I was fiercely against spending our taxpayers' money in other counties. And I, I was, I felt very strongly on that. And um, you know, between talking with Todd, talking with people that I work with who love it. And, and don't mind the drive and it's part of their relief and, and enjoy and enjoy being over there and have the land. And then when we had that presentation by our water attorney. And the foresight of, you know, banking water, for some reason, I made that connection to workforce housing and, and land banking. In, in other areas. And for those reasons, I'd be for exploring those options. And to be honest, being somewhat aggressive about it as um, you know, they're not making any more.
I think it's important that we do what Dick says, though. This has to be above board. You cannot go into another community. And buy land and then they find out later you're buying land.
No, no, no.
Blue River does not like, did not like the fact that, well, Blue River did not like the fact in the, in the. In the second round of talks on the join up of Blue Master Plan, Blue River did not like the fact that in the original join up of blue. There was some discuss, no, in our code, there was discussion about using Blue River as a bed base. So in the second join up or blue, the only reason they would sign on to is if we got rid of that in our code. So there are communities that will just say, no, you can't do this. We need, we definitely need their okay. Otherwise I think it's the wrong thing to do.
Yeah.
Totally.
I agree with you on that. And, and what's interesting right now at the, the CML conference, there's, there's state money out there for this exact thing. And then in talking with Turk on Goco, like if, if there would be a parcel that would have some sort of open space values. There's also some opportunities there to get additional funding to help, you know, make your dollar go further. So.
A lot of people hate us because we're beautiful.
A lot of people just hate us.
Okay. Can I give you some direction here, Chief?
And I guess Rick, I know Lori couldn't be here, but like, do, does this warrant something to add into the code? As we could just do that before first and second reading, or between, sorry.
I put my lawyer hat on here.
We can talk about it and if, if we think it deserves some attention, we can bring it back in before a second reading.
I don't know. We'll see.
Okay. All right, we're going to go to an executive session right now. Uh, so anybody in the crowd needs to leave.
Julia, thank you so much for all your work on all this stuff.
Go ahead and then we'll make the motion once you get back.
Mm-hmm.
Hello.
Man, you did a hollow leg today. What is that?
Oh, come on, okay.
Always coming to pattern, Eric.
I need to get you closer.
We're still in open session, so maybe you want to.
We're waiting for uh, Todd to get back. Hey, we're still being recorded. I don't know if you're saying something, you shouldn't.
No, no, no.
So you know.
Don't be reticent, let me know, right?
Watch the bear yet?
No.
Oh, it's good. FX, get it on Hulu.
Hulu?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Restaurant.
Yeah.
As a, as a classically trained chef, he has to take. He has to take over. Suicide brother, his brother commits suicide.
You're getting the look. You want to share?
Beef sandwich shop. And it's.
I know.
The fighting in the kitchen. I watched it with Sarah and she's.
Anyway.
Oh, yeah, totally. No, no lotion jobs.
No, no.
No, but the screaming in the kitchen were just made me feel a little warm and fuzzy. I miss those days. Comes back.
Should I just go ahead and go and then we can? Our lawyer said we can.
He's curled up. We could do the motion.
Those, so I get to do the first part, is that?
Oh. Do that. I move that the town council go into executive session under CRS. Twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Developing strategies for negotiations and or instructing negotiators concerning real property. That town may be interested in acquiring for open space purposes.
There's a motion in a second. Broten Owens?
Yes.
What we'll do there.
Okay, go ahead. Some of my sheet says presiding officer.
It really threw me off.
Miss Sade, yes. Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Yes.
Carlton.
Yes.
Dr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. It's July twelfth, twenty twenty-two and the time is five fifty-five PM. For the record, I am the presiding officer, Eric Mamula. As required by the opens meeting law, this executive session is being electronically recorded. Also present at this executive session are the following persons. Ann Lowe, Helen Kospalich, Rick Holman, Shannon Hayes. Scott Reed, Jay Beckerman, Carol Sade, Jeffrey Bergeron, Kelly Owens, Dick Carlton, Todd Rankin. Kirsten Crawford and myself, Eric Mamula. This is an executive session under CRS section twenty-four. Session. Town council has discussed in an executive session whether to direct the town manager to negotiate the acquisition of real property for open space purposes. For transparency, any final decision as to whether to enter into and execute a final agreement on the acquisition of such properties is the authority of the town manager. We are adjourned until seven. We're adjourned until seven o'clock.
Good everybody.
Yeah.
That was really, that was good stuff.
You make a compelling argument there, big fellow over there.
Yeah, you did a nice job, man. Kelly keeps swatting him.
Finding what we can and can't do. That was, that was great.
Cause it's kind of.
It's true. Everybody ready? Helen, we ready? I'd like to call the word of the town council, uh, regular meeting Tuesday, July 12th, 2022. It is 7:00 PM roll call, please.
Mr. Beckerman.
Here.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Carlton.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have approval of the minutes for June 28th, 2022. Any changes? Okay. All right. Minutes stand as presented. Approval of the agenda, Rick. Any changes?
No changes.
Agenda stands as presented. We have communications to council. We start with citizens comments. These are non-agenda items only. Three minute time limit. Please, if you want to say something, please stand up to the lectern. Tell us who you are and, uh, give us your three minutes. That includes, uh, anything from today's earlier discussion since it's not an agenda item. Yes, ma'am.
And is it on? Okay. I'm Kim Stevenson and, um, I'm a Summit County resident and I'm a business owner in Breckenridge. Uh, I also own Breckenridge Properties. Um, I'm happy to hear that the proposed resort zone will not have a cap on licenses. And also Zone One should not have a cap on licenses. Most buyers want short-term rental licenses in the resort and number one zones. So that the buyers can use the properties, sometimes themselves, in between rentals. Town council has made it extremely difficult for sellers to sell their properties. These are condominiums and town homes that were originally zoned, built and sold for short-term rentals. It seems highly discriminatory that some buyers will be able to get short-term rental licenses and some buyers will not. And what a nightmare for the town and sellers to figure out who gets the licenses and who doesn't. You know how many licenses there are now, but what is the number of the licenses that are actually being used? The number of current licenses is inflated with some owners not using them. What is the town council's plan to help the sellers in Zone One sell their condominiums if their buyers cannot obtain a short-term rental license? If new development grabs a bunch of licenses, then there won't be any licenses available for resale properties with your caps. Um, on a final note, I think I heard short-term rental license fees are going up and they are already too high. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, please.
Hello.
Hi.
Stay back a little so I don't. Um, so my name is Amanda Sprouls and I live at 17 North Amber Court. And, um, I listened today from my home office here up in Warriors Mark West to the discussion that you all were having about the, um, protecting the character of Breckenridge and the experience. And I think sometimes when you live day to day in Breckenridge, you forget that the changes that have been made, um, over like maybe the last 10 or 20 years and you see them day to day. And you think that's the original experience, but I'm here to tell you, that's not necessarily the case. My family, excuse me, my family has been skiing here since the early, uh, I, well, I guess the late seventies. I started skiing here when I was five. I have a fan, we grew up with a family of five kids. And Breckenridge was the place that you rented homes. You didn't go to Keystone because then you would be in one of their concrete condos. You didn't stay in copper for the same reason. Vale was way too fancy and expensive. So your only choice was Breck or Crested Butte. I'm originally from Oklahoma and that is what Oklahoma and Texans who really built this town remember. And we want those homes. We want that experience. So growing up that way, I remember with the lifts of Peak Nine, excuse me, didn't have, they didn't have padding. I remember going up the lifts on Peak Nine and singing Jingle Bells with my family when it was zero degrees. You know, we came and skied, we skied twice a year, a week at a time, Christmas and spring break. And that's the experience I share by living in Warriors Mark West and renting my property. My family lives here three to four months a year and we love that experience. My husband and I actually honeymooned up here 27 years ago and we came in May. We skied at a basin and I remember coming down at seven o'clock to eat dinner and most of those restaurants were closed in May. Most of the stores were closed in May back in the day. And I think it's easy to forget that, but that's the real experience of Breckenridge. And I think by taking these older 40-year-old, 45-year-old communities that were always meant to be shared as rentals, to take that away from this experience just makes us some fancy dancy California-type resort or Vale Resort or Aspen. And I don't want to be at a place like that. I always brag about how much better Breckenridge is and it saddens me, saddens me to hear you all talk about not providing that experience anymore. With five kids, my family never would have rented a condo. Never would have done that. We would never would have stayed in hotel. We wanted the home experience. So the last thing, if I have any, anything else to say is our neighborhood and renting, I have four bedrooms, four baths. We rent to multi-generational families, families that like mine that have been coming for 30, 30 years. Thank you all for listening.
Amanda, thank you. All right, who's next? Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Tom Hallberg. I own a home in Upper Warriors Mark on White Cloud Drive. My home backs to the National Forest and has direct access to the Borough Trail in the summer and the ski slopes and lifts in the winter. In the morning, I'm able to ski from my back door to the lifts at the base of Peak Nine. And at the end of the day, I skied in my back door from the runs on Peak 10. I purchased my home because of its proximity to the resort. I spend three to five months of the year at my home. The rest of the time I use my short-term rental license to offset the cost of owning such an expensive home. One of the council members mentioned that Zone Three is for Breckenridge residents who live and work in the community. Upper Warriors Mark is not a working-class neighborhood. It mostly consists of expensive vacation homes. The monthly break even on my home is approximately 7,000 for mortgage and ownership-related expenses. As a rule of, uh, as a rule, housing expenses should not exceed more than 30% of your gross monthly income. In this example, you would need to earn around $23,000 a month at your job here in the community to own my home. There are not enough $300,000 a year jobs in all of Summit County to replace the short-term rental owners in my neighborhood with local workers for the town of Breckenridge. Our neighborhood land use district 30.5, excuse me, is currently at 52.7 short-term rental units. I understand your needs and desires to reduce the total number of STR licenses. I disagree with incorrectly zoning areas based on extremely high hopes of hitting unachievable target numbers. Upper Warriors Mark will never be a working-class neighborhood. Zoning Upper Warriors Mark as Zone Three is wrong and inconsistent with the zone's own description. I fear that these short-term rental zones and their associated descriptions will be used for other aspects of town planning and development. And that that may lead to reduction in services for our neighborhood based on being placed in an inaccurate zone. I am speaking specifically about the winter shuttle service that is of great value to myself and the other property owners in the neighborhood. If you're going to arbitrarily apply short-term rental zoning to land use districts based on hopes and dreams, you should allow the property owners in each district an opportunity to appeal your decisions prior to implementation of the zoning. This is no different than when a property owner requests a zoning variance for their own individual property and their neighbors are allowed to weigh in. Regardless of what you decide, Upper Warriors Mark will never be a home for workers serving the town of Breckenridge and zoning it as such is a big mistake. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Tom. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council and friends.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Julie Costa, the executive director for Summit Alliance of Vacation Rental Managers. And also, um, I actually live in Frisco, but my local office here is at 111 Ski Hills, just right around the corner. Um, I am here representing the second homeowners, the HOAs, the property management companies, some folks who don't even have any voting rights here in our community. Even though they don't have voting rights, I think it's really important that these folks are represented and that they're spoken for. As the executive director for Save VRM, earlier today I sent you a letter. Um, it's a couple pages long, so I'm sorry, there's a lot to read there. Um, but it's very important to highlight some of the data and some of the important facts that are presented in that letter. We have a lot more where that came from. I have a 70-page economic impact study that we commissioned out of CU Boulder this spring that I would love to share with you. That economic impact study actually covers the entire county, but it does break out some data specific to each of the towns that's collected through the Department of Revenue and several other different, um, state entities that will help inform some of your decisions. One of the things that I heard mentioned earlier during the work session was the, the look at the different zones, right? And looking at how many units within each zone and you bounced around some numbers, 190, 85, 50, 10. Um, a lot of different options there and looking at those numbers, I think they were really good options to consider. What we really appreciated from a Save VRM perspective is actually what Jay brought to the table. I think talking about Zone One as more of a resort-type zone and classifying it in line with those resort properties really makes a lot of sense. And I liked what Todd said, too. You could go somewhere between 90 and 100% in those zones. Because what skin is it really off of your nose at the end of the day? Creating that security and that openness to folks who are in the middle of real estate transactions or considering them in the future gives people an opportunity to make an informed real estate buying or selling transaction and know that their rights are going to be secure and that the person that they're selling to and the person after that is going to be able to continue to rent if they so wish. The other piece that you guys talked about was the land use districts. And I think that's a really important piece of the conversation as well, talking about LUD 10 and talking about 30.5. Those are really, really important areas to consider because of where they are and because of the types of properties that lay within them. As another gentleman mentioned, those are never going to be workforce housing units. So I think that part of the conversation is off the table. But looking at those areas for the way they were developed and what they are made to be, those are tourism zones. That's where we want the people to be. And Jay said this earlier, too. If we can put the people in a place where we want them to be, so they have access to the amenities, they have the services that they need in order to sustain their vacation, why not send them there? So if we can take 10, 30.5 and put those into Zone One and open it up, just open up the floodgates, make it 100%, not 90, just make it 100. We're never going to get to 100 anyway, you guys, because there's going to be people who own units.
I'm.
Sorry. Thank you.
Julie, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Tim Painter and I live six months a year at River Mountain Lodge and travel six months a year. The first thing I'd like to do is thank all of you because I know this hasn't been easy. And I see it's a heart-wrenching, heart-wrenching discussion and I can see you weighing every, every inch. Uh, first of all, the discussion that you had about, um, Zone, the resort zone, I think was really on point. And, uh, the whole objective here is to move people, tourists, into one area. And when we say, well, we can only have 90% or, or whatever percent, I think it's a mistake. I think 100% was the right decision there. Um, the other point about the resort zone is that most of these properties are not good for long-term rentals. I live there and I can tell you the noise and the congestion that goes on in the short-term property is just, is, is not conducive to, to peace. See if I have anything else to add. I don't want to take up. Where the mice send it. Uh, I think one of the decisions is do you zone them to, for 100% or do you zone them to be vacant? Because it will never become a short-term rentals. So why zone them to be vacant? It doesn't make sense. Let's tell people, and I left the point that Breckenridge is open. We have received some pretty bad publicity about this. Breckenridge is open for business. And by the way, I think personally, I don't want to give you legal advice, but one of the best defenses against a regulation is to say, yes, it's permitted. It's not permitted there, but it is permitted here. And when you have a zone that's with 100% permission, then I think you really defend against potential challenges to the law. Uh, well, thank you for your hard decisions and, and we'll see where it ends up.
Good to see you again, Tim. Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir. Oh, good evening. My name is David Furman. I'm with Altitude Community Law, speaking on behalf of Main Street Junction tonight. And what they've asked me to say is that, uh, I do want to thank you for consideration and, and do understand this is a no-win situation on all ends. And we do thank you. But we've got, Main Street Junction unfortunately is a very difficult situation as well. Because being part of the Main Street community, it just happens to find itself on the wrong side of the proverbial tracks. They're across the highway and they fall into Zone Three, yet they are part of that community. Part of the resort concept, part of they have access to the amenities, they have to pay the association fees. And they're also required to address, you know, pay everything that they have to do, but they just don't get the benefits now as being falling into some, uh, falling into Zone Three where they've got a very reduced cap. They're currently 67% of the owners use, uh, the units as short-term rentals. They bought the short-term rentals. They expect it to be short-term rentals. And, and it's just something, again, as you go through this, and I understand that, you know, during the work session, you've talked about migration of the units. This is just one of those situations that it just, like I said, kind of falls out and they just, because of behalf of the development that was on the wrong side of the street, they are now falling out of a classification that the rest of the development gets to benefit from. And, and they just ask for your consideration on those points. Thank you very much. Dave, do you know what, was Main Street Junction part of the entire Main Street Station master plan? Do you know? It was. I understand it was. Okay. It was a single development built by two different developers to split cost. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else this evening? Going once, going twice, sold. Oh. Yes, sir.
And my name's Josh Smith. I'm a, uh, property maintenance and remodeler here in town. Most of my business comes from short-term rentals. This is a town of tourism. Uh, these people buy these properties here, properties I'll never be able to own, but they buy them and they invest in this town, in this community. Keeps our trades alive, keeps the heat on in the winter. It keeps our doors closed when they blow open. People like me work really hard to stay up here because it is so expensive. I don't necessarily hold any grudge against anybody for owning property that I'll never be able to own, but I am appreciative of the opportunities to be able to work on it. I've moved through multiple apartments throughout this county and the long-term owners don't cut the grass, don't paint the walls. They just kind of re-rent and re-rent to these low. the long-term owners don't cut the grass, don't paint the walls. They just kind of re-rent and re-rent to these locals that that ludicrous prices. It's very hard to find somewhere to live here. But when you do find something and you do work hard. You can survive up here. You can stay up here. You can thrive up here. But when we have government coming in and telling people how they should use their private properties, that really tarnishes the reputation that this town has or is losing. We have Vale Resorts, a very large mega corporation with a giant advertising budget. That tells the world about this place. It's a very popular place. It's a very safe place. You don't need to lock your doors here. So not everyone deserves to live here. We need to keep trying to figure out better options than controlling our citizens and especially the ones that can't vote because they don't live here. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. It's not because it's a different, yeah, please. It's a different land use district. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is James Cloud. I come to you completely unprepared. But I would like you to at least reconsider the zoning for Upper Warriors Mark. I think the community up there is, was built as resort properties. It's one of the few areas in Breckenridge that is really targeted towards rentals and the ability for people to come here and rent a house is otherwise, what are the choices? How many places in Breckenridge are you leaving open for rentals of houses? Not everyone that comes here wants to rent a condo. A lot of people want a house. So I just wanted you to, just wanted to put that out there. Please reconsider it. Thank you.
James, what's your address?
Thirty-eight A Amber Court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Gastman. I live in Upper Warriors Market, eighteen Timber Hill Drive. And I would like for you all to reconsider the zoning for thirty point five. We are a ski-in, ski-out neighborhood. We can walk to the trails two hundred yards from our, our residences and ski down to the Quicksilver Lift or the Beaver Run Lift. And there are so few places in the town of Breckenridge that offer ski-in, ski-out. And it would be a travesty if we rezoned and made it nearly impossible to get a short-term license in the next twenty years, the way I perceive the numbers. And please reconsider the zoning of thirty point five.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and with that, public hearing is closed and we move on to Breckenridge Tourism Office update. Thank you, everybody that came to talk tonight. Appreciate it. Lucy.
Hey. I think you all have the lodging information in your packets, but just a real top-line overview there is our summer is now flat. We've been predicting that for the last few months. We've been ahead, you know, ten, fourteen percent. We're now like within one point of being flat. It's still good. We're happy with that. The rest of the DMX subset is down eight percent. So we're doing better than the set, but we are seeing the close-in bookings and the demand on Jack Rabbit and things like that really declined. So we're expecting, you know, we might go under. We don't think it's going to be drastic, but we are flat. We have changed our messaging. We initially were going into the summer with fifty percent responsible tourism messaging, fifty percent the normal kind of aspirational stuff. When we saw these trends, you know, we went ahead and changed that. So we are now one hundred percent aspirational in market. And when we're retargeting, people were retargeting with the responsible. So that's how we're, we're doing it. We don't want to give up anything in the marketplace with it being the situation. We, let's see, we, it's kind of, there's some real contradictory information out there. Consumer confidence index is down, not surprising. There's an expectation index, a consumer expectation index that looks forward a little more long-term. That is the lowest it's been in a decade. And then you look at Denver Airport and they're spending, they're investing billions of dollars in thirty-five new gates. So it's, I don't know how you reconcile that. I guess, you know, optimism plays a big part of that. Which I would be in that camp. So anyway, we're, we're flat. We're not panicking yet, but we are, I just want you all to know that we are, even though we're the ones with the little marketing budget, we make a lot of noise and we're on top of this. So we really are being quite careful with the messaging and where the spend is. In terms of who's been here so far, you know, I will just add to, we did end up fourteen percent down over the fourth. That Thursday through Tuesday was down fourteen percent. And that's what it looked like the week before the event. But in terms of people who are here, and this is the Intercept survey through July tenth, so pretty current. Our Colorado versus out-of-state mix is pretty consistent with what it's been all along, roughly thirty, seventy, thirty percent-ish for Colorado, seventy percent out-of-state. The overnight guests, which includes some Colorado people in there, is eighty-seven percent so far this summer versus eighty percent in two thousand nineteen. And it makes some sense because what we're seeing is a lot of Colorado people that maybe used to come up for the day or come up for one night. Now they're staying for two or three nights because of what gas costs and the expense. So they're making the trip a little more worthwhile. So we're seeing more Colorado guests overnight and the length of stay for that group is longer. Length of stay for the out-of-state folks is longer too. It's over six nights. The other interesting thing is of the day visitors, which is only thirteen percent of the total so far, but within that fifty-nine percent of the day visitors are from out-of-state. So they're coming in from Eagle or they're coming in from someplace else. Pre-pandemic, that number was forty-four percent. So that's a pretty significant shift. So some of that traffic are actually out-of-state guests coming in and out for the day. One thing we changed this year is on the Intercept survey, that's the man-on-the-street surveys. We are now asking locals some of the same questions we're asking guests. We haven't done that in the past. We started this year. Fifty, and we have a small sample so far, but it's, you know, just, and we'll track this every week. Fifty-six percent of the people we interviewed work from home. Twenty-two percent of them say they come into town more. Seventy-six percent said the same amount. Only three percent said less. It's a little different from what we saw on the desk and on the resident survey, the big seasonal one. So we're going to bump this all the time against our seasonal data to see. You know, like, is it more accurate on a weekly basis versus somebody trying to remember what they thought about the whole prior season? Half of the people coming into town come for leisure, only ten percent come for business. And their MPS score is pretty high. And this is would you recommend Breck as a place to visit? We're not quoting numbers yet because the sample size is pretty small, but it's, it's very favorable. So any questions on the data or questions on any of that stuff?
Lucy, when you said that Fourth of July was down fourteen percent, that was occupancy?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Compared to twenty twenty-one, do you have any idea how it compared to twenty nineteen?
I don't have that right here with me, but I certainly have it. I would say it's probably down from nineteen as well. Probably down more.
Does that account for the added rooms?
This is, this is room nights. I'm doing this in room nights for exactly that reason, because we have seven percent more available rooms. So to just look at occupancy wouldn't really be accurate. So this is room nights. Yeah. Good question, Jay. Okay, real quick, a couple other quick things. I wanted to let you know that we did finish the Breck one-on-one orientation and that's where we have about thirty businesses provide, you know, samples of their product or service. And we had a hundred and fifteen students or frontline employees go through that. So we're pretty happy with that. And very grateful for the thirty businesses that partnered with us. The crusher news, of course, is that Brett Howard is leaving. He's going to be here through, I know. It took me a day until I could talk about it, even though I've known for a while that it was going to happen at some point. But he's here through mid-August and then much likely on, he's going to be on contract. So he's not gone, gone. We can reach out and call him and he'll lean in and help anytime we need that. So we're in the process of dealing with all of everything that comes with that. And we'll do a nice, a nice party for him for sure. I wanted to just maybe address a couple of things from the work session this morning and then, you know, open it for you guys. Bring any questions relative to events regarding the snow sculpture. We did do the awards on Friday this year to try to move that. What, what the founders, what Rob and Ron will say, nobody's booking there, nobody's planning their trip around the awards unless they're people who know people who are sculpting or really connected to the event. So moving that earlier in the week isn't going to, people aren't coming for that. I mean, it's cool if they can see who won first, but it's not really the driver. So I think Friday is the day we'll leave it. If we made it any earlier in the week, we'd have to push the build back, you know, the, the teams need at least four days to carve. So that was one thing there. We did really vet that. And we will be planning on reservations. I think the Saturday reservations are a permanent part of that event. And so I just wanted to answer those questions, but anything else on events or for the BTO?
Anyone? Thank you. All right, move on to new business this evening. We have first readings of a couple of council bills versus Council Bill number twenty-one. Don't have any second readings. Council Bill number twenty-one, series twenty twenty-two, this is an ordinance approving an amendment to the utility easement agreement for Summit Public Radio and TV Incorporated. Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. For you for first reading is a bill that would approve, as you said, a utility easement for Summit Public Radio and Television to effectuate their overland route they're proposing between the Lorium kind of switch boxes and transformers that are down there all the way to their repeater site up on Bald Mountain. As discussed at work session this afternoon, the overall length of the current proposal is over four thousand feet and across the, largely across the national forest and some private land. A portion of it, about two hundred and thirty-three feet crosses town and county joint land. And as we discussed earlier, restoration is a top priority in this amendment, both for what's currently going to be done or proposed to be done as far as zippering and new installation, as well as the work that was already done last fall. Happy to answer any questions you all may have regarding this, this proposed bill.
Do you think in the, in the re-veg and rehabilitation of the, you know, the Lorium Road, they'll take some of those berms out or make them more?
Water bars?
Water bars.
So I've been on that twice. I was at it right when it melted out and I agree with you, they were pretty aggressive. I think reshaping is definitely part of what they're doing. I understand there are three primary sections they really want to come back and focus on. Typically, we find that those water bars, diversion, ditches, whatever tend to be very aggressive to begin with and they settle out because they're not compacted. And so even when we've done roadwork throughout the Golden Horseshoe and other times, those types of those types of water bars are pretty aggressive to start and then they tend to, they tend to mellow out over time. So I'm going to defer to the county engineer who's working on that. But I feel like we can continue to, you know, with this passage of this, potentially we'll have more ability to monitor and also point out where we want to see some changes. And so truly, if it becomes a problem, I think we can, we can do that. I should mention that Sue Green from, from Summit Public Radio and Television is here as well, in case you have questions for them as the potential holder of this easement.
Other questions? Sue, thanks for being here. Like wish to comment on this first reading this evening?
This is a different one.
Oh, it's a different one?
Yeah. I don't know.
Seeing, seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion, Jeffrey?
Yes, I move we pass on first reading, Council Bill number twenty-one, series twenty twenty-two. The title, which has been in the form that's handed out right here.
Yeah, these are for the next one. Title, which has been written.
In the record. Yeah.
There's a motion.
Second, any further discussion from council?
Yeah, I have a discussion. Yeah. I'm a huge fan of Summit Public Radio. But I would love to see us having a local radio station. Cresta Butte has a Telluride, Moab, you know, kind of a, a little grassroots radio station. But I know it would take a lot of work, but that's something that every time we travel, we go to some of these towns like the Butte. Telluride, you know, it's cool to hear the kind of local color, not that, you know, so.
And Jeffrey's available, really what he's getting at.
When we get the power line in, we will have adequate power to do that. And it's something you know, I've been on the board for twenty years that, that we've thought about. And the big deal is we are just managing an electronic site that's transmitting radio and TV.
You'd have to have a studio and a lot of costs.
And you need somebody to run it and create the content. So maybe that is a good job.
Yeah, you don't want to open that door with me. I've had a little bit of problem with my, my delivery in the last.
That's what does it though.
Yeah.
Oh, it'd be great.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be, you know, and I think there's enough talent in the community. There is some fixed costs and I was in TV and radio forever. But, yeah, but I'd love to see us do something like that.
Jeffrey, you got new calls, buddy.
Yeah. It'll be, yeah. WBIFF. But thanks, keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
We have the first reading Council Bill number twenty-two, series twenty twenty-two. This is an ordinance establishing a division of housing within community planning and development authorized to create and preserve workforce housing and in conjunction therewith adopting fines and penalties.
Mayor and Council, this is a codification of our housing programs and funds. The only new substantive policy change is the addition of administrative fines and penalties for compliance issues having to do with teacher restrictions and restrictive covenants. If you have any questions, just let me know. Or Corey is here as well.
Questions?
Thank you for the change.
And the hard copy you have, you have two different hard copies, but we're the, the first one has to do with the housing programs. We made a minor modification to the intent statement.
Which one for twenty-two are we looking at now? Is it housing or ethics?
Housing.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
All right, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading this evening? No, public hearing is closed, is their motion?
The first reading will move you past Council Bill number twenty-two. Series twenty twenty-two in the form that was just handed out.
In a second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mr. Brett Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
We have the first reading Council Bill number twenty-three, this is series twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending the code of ethics pertaining to town contracts.
Council, this is a change to the ethics code, I think in the nature of a clarification, just to make it clear that town contracts with employees or officers having to do with either housing-related programs or employment contracts are not prohibited under that.
Thank you. Questions of staff? I know, these things are funky.
What's going on here? Look at this.
No questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading this evening? No, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
First reading will pass Council Bill number twenty-three, series twenty twenty-two in the form that was handed out pertaining to ethics.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mr. Beckerman. Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have no resolutions this evening, but we do have some planning matters. First are planning commission decisions. From, what date was that? The fifth of July. Any call-ups this evening? No, planning commissions stand as presented. We now have the FERC Building Town Project Hearing.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Kulik, Planning Manager for the town of Breckenridge, presenting the Soul Center at Alta Verida. Otherwise known as the FERC and Building Hope. But we have a proposal to construct a eighteen thousand one hundred and fifty square foot. Uh, otherwise known as, uh, the FERC and Building Hope. But we have a proposal to construct a eighteen thousand one hundred and fifty square foot, uh, building containing a nonprofit thrift store, food bank and nonprofit offices for the FERC and then, uh, Building Hope's, uh, offices. This project is located at twenty-four Rapid Drive, which is on the McCain parcel, uh, just to the east of, of, uh, the recently approved Alta Verde two subdivision. So up on the screen, we have the site plan for the project, which shows, uh, the drive aisle for the delivery trucks and then also, for drop-offs of, uh, donations or pickups, uh, curbside pickup for food on the east side of the building. Uh, the main parking lot, which totals twenty-four parking spaces to the west of the building. And then the remaining twenty spaces within the center of the P, uh, to be shared with Alta Verde two. We'll go one more slide here. This is the landscaping plan, which shows, uh, sufficient, um, plantings and buffering of new trees around the site, the screen. Really, the, the building as well as, uh, the drive aisles and, um, in parking area where there's currently no vegetation on site. So it'll be definitely an enhancement to this new neighborhood and really kind of the gateway building into the Alta Verde two, um, neighborhood. Looking at, uh, the elevations on the next slide here. The building measures at two stories, which is, uh, twenty-six feet with each story measuring thirteen feet. To the, um, projecting parapets in the center with the stair towers measuring twenty-eight feet, which is two feet above the right recommended height for the district, but the planning commission, um, believe that was worthy of the exemption, which is specified under the building height section of the code allowing for, um, feature, like, uh, architectural features that feature no density or mass to be excluded from the height calculation. There are also solar panels on the roof that measure to twenty-eight feet at the tallest, um, portion. But just like other projects such as the rec center, we have typically not measured solar panels for height. Looking at, uh, the renderings here, uh, the building does feature brick to give it a more permanent institutional feel, uh, feel. And also hopefully provide less maintenance over the long term. But as, um, I think you're well aware, a brick and other non-natural materials such as metal do, um, get assessed negative points when they reach over twenty-five percent of a facade, uh, at the largest portion. Or largest amount of, uh, non-natural materials, including brick and metal, uh, is at just over forty-eight percent. So it does not reach the higher threshold of negative six points, but does reach, uh, negative three points for having that much, um, non-natural materials by code. We did, going back to circulation, because of just the amount of curb cuts and paving around the majority of the building. Uh, we did assign it negative three points, uh, under internal circulation for just recognizing that there probably could have been a design that maybe would have had more efficient circulation. Uh, but as I mentioned previously at the work session, there was kind of a, a, a fair bit of back and forth and, um, almost like a compromise to get to this design, just considering the turning radiuses and other functions that were very important to the house and the building. We do have representatives, uh, from the FERC here tonight. We have, uh, Brianne, who is, uh, I believe, executive director of the FERC to answer questions in terms of operations. We have Barbara Gibbs, representing Building Hope. And then we have Suzanne Allen Sabo and Andy Stabile, who were the designers on this project that we worked extensively with. Um, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and I know that they're all prepared to answer some of the questions that maybe were, um, you know, uh, put out there during the work session. So I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chris. Questions?
Are you happy with the design, Brianne?
They're next, right?
You're not worried about not having a loading dock or?
No, we're very much happy with the design. We've been working, um, really closely with Suzanne and Andy and they've come to all of our sites and have a good understanding of what we need. And so I think we've, um, designed a really great building that's gonna work for us.
And you're okay, you can unload the trucks yourself?
We do unload the trucks ourselves. You guys can come and help us and see how it works.
Any other questions? Okay.
Well, on behalf of Building Hope and FERC, uh, we really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this project? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I don't know how you do that. What do you, how?
Before we make the motion, I do want to point out probably the one, one thing it was added or recommended to be added by the planning commission was, uh, a crosswalk connection from the main parking area to the P, which is not identified. You can see there's a sidewalk, uh, just to the west of the, um, parking area on, on the main parcel. And that was added recommendation by the planning commission and, and we did actually incorporate, they incorporated that in their motion. And so we, um, then incorporated and recommended motion. So I thought that was worth pointing out as well.
I'm ready. Ready?
Tim, Tim Casey had a couple of things he wanted me to say.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Gives me time to preview this motion.
Perfect.
Alan Sabo with Allen Gear Architecture. Uh, thank you to Chris. He's been amazing to work with. And, um, thanks to you guys for donating land. That's amazing as well. So Tim Casey and I just spoke and he wanted me to just, I, and maybe this really is between Rick and Tim, I'm not sure. But, um, he wanted to ask for a few things, um, financially, which maybe is, should be brought up at this point, but he asked me to get up here and say this. So it's not my deal. But, um, he wanted the deferral of the sewer taps to CO, which I think you guys are working on. He wanted to wave the water taps and he wants to make sure the site is buildable. Because as you know, the pond was filled in and the soil wasn't compacted. And so now we have, we have a parking, uh, area that's, some of it's on thirty-five feet of fill that's uncompacted. So we're gonna have to dig all that out and we're gonna have to recompact it. And there's a lot of expense associated with that. So we, he just wanted to let you guys know about that. And, uh, you know, uh, FERC doesn't have the finances to be able to, to, to do that. And they didn't understand that when they agreed to the site. So, um, this is hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of extra work. We're gonna have to build a building on micro piles instead of a traditional foundation. There's a lot of stuff that we're having to do to accommodate that old pond site. So, um, just as an FYI, and, uh, the only other thing that I'm bringing up is we've been asked to perform a traffic study, which we can bring up with the planning staff, but it's part of, part of this report and part of the findings and conditions from planning. And we don't even have a road out there right now. So it's a little hard to do a traffic study. So that's the only other thing I just wanted to bring up, but, um, it's been amazing. It's been a fun process with these guys and, um, I'm excited to have the building under construction. Thank you.
And thank you, Tim Casey, who's probably, probably listening. Thanks for, thanks for a dig when he's not here, right?
He likes his own parking spot.
But there also.
Yeah.
Question on the, um, you know, on the old pond site, because that was talked about quite extensively.
Yeah. And I think it was a, like, it was a couple million dollar extra cost to fill it in with structurally compacted fill. And instead, truck, dump trucks just showed up and filled it in, you know?
Was always the plan and it, one, I thought, I guess I was on the impression we were gonna design around that and not, not get ourselves in this.
Do we have the topo? Does somebody, can somebody bring that up, the site with a topo?
That's what we're checking on, because, you know, we did, they did it, the original drawing member put the building more, uh, a different orientation more at the southern end of that section to avoid that. And then when it got changed and moved, uh, half of it got stuck farther north. So, I mean, I've been told when I met with them that they're concerned because half of the building is in fill area. And I'm waiting to talk to Sharon Smith.
Yeah. And I think it's always, the parking lot has always been out there. So we were always going to have to take up thirty-five feet of.
But we were less concerned.
But we were less concerned about the parking, although, I mean, I'm concerned with thirty-five feet. I mean, that's kind of crazy amount of fill. Like, you know, when we backfill a building, we're expecting, you know, maybe there's six inches or a foot of, you know, it, it settles a little bit over the winter or something the next spring. But imagine thirty-five feet, you know, of uncompacted fill. So it, it will be feet that it potentially settles. So.
Okay, well, well.
FYI, just an off the record kind of.
No, it's important though, because if, I mean, if we find that that's we may have to move the building.
It's concerning to me too, because we, yeah.
Want to spend millions of dollars on a fill situation if we do.
Cause I don't think it's millions, but it's hundreds of thousands.
A lot of money, whatever it is. So, okay. Well, we'll pass this tonight and we have to come back for a change. We will.
Okay.
Ready?
Thank you.
Enthusiastic right now.
Sorry.
Tim Casey and I, I make a motion to approve the Soul Center Alta Verde Family and Intercultural Resource Center, PL twenty twenty-three dash zero thirty-nine, located at twenty-four Rapid Drive on track D two McCain subdivision with the attached point analysis of a positive one point. And the findings and conditions included in this motion is a recommended, a recommendation to add a crosswalk from the building, uh, parking lot P to the parking area. And, uh, yeah.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I'm still troubled with this whole, I mean, if we pass this now, are, are we agreeing to do this? I?
No, we can come back and amend this. This can be amended. If it has to do with moving the building, I mean.
Yeah, Dick, right now, we just got George from C T L out there yesterday. So we will have some soils, deep soils reports in a bunch of spots in the building. So then we'll have a little more information.
You'll have more.
Be able to actually say, okay, with the builder rock ridge, be able to say this is a seventy-five thousand dollar fix or this is a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar fix.
Okay. So that's, we'll pass it to move forward, but it's still a work in progress. Is that?
Yeah, we, we don't have construction documents ready. They're not gonna be ready until the end of August.
Yeah. And Suzanne, we really appreciate you. I, I know you're putting a lot of pro bono work into this and it's, it, I mean, it's such an important organization. Both organizations are so important. It's such an important facility. So I, I don't want to sound ungrateful, but I just, you know, we've, we've got to make this thing work for all of us. So. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Sade. Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Epidly, yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, we have, uh, reported town manager and staff.
Uh, did we all agree on September sixth that we could do the retreat that day?
Yeah, does that work for everybody?
And Todd down there?
Are you gonna be gone before, when you're flying around again? Traveler?
All right. So we're gonna go with that. We'll, uh, lock that in. I'll have Peyton send, uh, meeting. Thanks to all of you. Cast is, uh, uh, August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth in Salida.
Salida.
So, uh, if you're interested in going for overnight there, let us know.
Where is it? Where is it gonna be?
Salida.
Salida, okay.
We're gonna be.
Twenty-sixth.
Share a room?
You gotta go to meetings though.
Oh, I'll just go there. Just go on bike while I'm sitting in a meeting. That doesn't work.
Yeah. Coffee talk a week from today, uh, July nineteenth. We're gonna be at Country Boy Mine in the morning and then Eric, you're doing a raid.
Right afterwards. So.
You coming, Rick? What are you gonna do, a country boy?
We're gonna talk there. Oh, that was so worth the whole night, just for that.
That makes it the swamp at, uh, the FERC Center worthwhile. Yeah.
We're gonna have our new compost dumpster at the, in the old impound lot on the Stillset.
Sweet.
Oh, cool.
That was gonna be delivered yesterday.
Combos and stuff?
You have to get a code, right?
Yeah.
Because you do it, then you could drop off there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
So once.
There's always a lot of good food in there sometimes.
I know. Once you open it, it's all yours. No expectation of privacy.
But get in touch with HC three if you're interested and they'll give you a bucket and the code.
I already have a bucket for the other one.
Will it be a different code or the codes will be the same?
They're the same, uh, here and in Frisco. So I'm guessing that one will be the same as well. Thank you for doing that.
So we're, we're trying that de novo hearing that we talked to you about that we put off for a little bit because a person couldn't be here. We still want to try to make that hearing happen. So we're looking at a way to do it. Uh, we might shoot for August the ninth. And actually maybe start an hour early at two o'clock. I think we could probably knock out that hearing in an hour, don't you?
What is this hearing?
Can't be too, this is the one where somebody is appealing, uh, the, their bedroom count for STR licensing purposes. And they are out of the country and can't be back in the country for an extended period of time. So. Then virtually, but we told them somebody has to be here to represent.
Kirsten, the council would have to, um, suspend their meeting rules for that. Do you want to just mention, like, when would we do that?
Oh, I think it's fine to do it at the, at the meeting. I, I doubt you'll have objection if we can get someone in attendance, because the rules don't contemplate those sort of hearings being conducted remotely, like our call-up hearings. But we'll, we'll ask you to suspend the rules to allow this individual to be remote.
Okay.
Very flexible.
Yeah.
Yeah. August ninth. Any issues if we started an hour early? Cause you're very flexible.
Thank you, Rick. No cast or MMC? How about, uh, open space? Anything to add?
No, no.
All right, tourism.
Next week.
History.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Excellent. Creative arts coming up soon. First meeting of the month. Events.
We already talked a lot about it.
Yeah, we did.
Childcare.
Uh, unbeknownst to me, the July meeting was canceled.
Did you?
Time in the, uh.
Did you show up?
Oh, absolutely. I had some quality time with our town manager.
Nice. Uh, housing. Anything to?
Thursday, we're meeting.
All right, equity.
Monday, we're meeting.
Any other matters? Team.
Nice work tonight, gang.
Yeah, this has been a hard, it's been a hard year of doing stuff. So thank you all for your diligence and your patience. That's all I have to say. Okay, with that.